All right, we'll call to order a regular meeting of Chisholm City Council for April twenty second, two thousand and twenty. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just let me just up on the top of your council agenda, there's a few notes up there about these meetings. It would be best if we can, if you're not speaking, if you would mute yourself, so we're not popping in and out of the screen. If you could, if you remember. With that said, I will look to Margaret to give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Lance.
Here.
Counselor Fountain.
Here.
Counselor Vaki.
Here.
Counselor Varda.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
And Mayor Champa.
I am here. Okay, adopt the agenda. We've got just a couple of minor things. Jim Johnson would like to have D one and D two rearranged. It's a more flowing order for what we're doing with that, so I'd ask that we change item one and two around under D. And then I think all of you see, we had an email earlier today from the school, they'd like some help with banners for seniors. And I would like to add that as the last item tonight. So I'd entertain a motion to.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, to accept the agenda with those added changes and moving around those two items for Jim Johnson.
Okay, motion by Counselor Campbell is her second for that.
Court.
Court by Counselor Lance. Okay, Lance?
Lance.
Okay, Margaret, roll call real quick, vote.
Counselor Lance.
Yeah.
Counselor Fountain.
Hi.
Counselor Vaki.
Hi.
Counselor Varda.
Hi.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi.
And Mayor Champa.
I. Okay, that pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the states of America and to the republic which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
As well.
The team.
Liberty, yes, this.
All right. Hey, Bill? Question for you.
Yes, Mayor.
Are we, what are we doing about public participation? Are we working on trying to get them to be able to be in on these meetings in some form or fashion? Or at this point, are we just by written request?
Right now, it's written request to me, Mayor.
All right, do you have anything, Bill?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay, so we'll move on to council reports, but before we do that, let me just do a rundown. I see that the building officials here, Jim, are you on tonight, Bill, Jim Johnson?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I see Larry's here. Library Katie, are you on tonight?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, good. Chief Manor, are you on tonight?
Yes, sir.
Good. Tammy, Rec Director?
Yes, I'm present.
Perfect. Attorney Lindsay?
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, so we got everybody here. So let's see, I'll start over on my right tonight with Counselor Varda. Do you have a report tonight?
No report.
Counselor Fountain, report?
Just a quick one. I just want to thank our administrative professionals. It's your day today, so thank you for all you do for us, especially you, Bill. And the Chisholm Food Shelf is having a fundraiser April twentieth through May eighth. And stay home and stay safe and thank you.
Counselor Vaki, report?
Yeah, I'll just echo Happy Administrative Professional Day for Margaret and Bill and Elaine and the rest of the city. Administrative help in that area. Happy birthday a couple of days ago to Counselor Campbell. And today is my birthday as well. Thank you.
Counselor Campbell, report tonight?
Just a quick one. Happy birthday, Travis. And happy administration day to everybody. And yes, thank you for all you do for us. You're a God sent. Also, the quarterly ambulance report will be coming out at the next meeting. It's not quite ready yet. Joe is working on that report. And tomorrow night, I'll be attending an auxiliary staff orientation meeting for the Chisholm Ambulance via Zoom. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Lance, report?
I'd just like to say that Governor Walz had announced this week his homemade mask drop off. For anybody home that wants to help out, make your own mask, drop it off at a local fire department between ten and two on Saturday. And we're going to be using our ambulance service to help get those to nursing homes, veterans' homes, or basically anyone in need for a reusable mask. So if anybody is able to help out with that, that'd be great. And also, I'd just like to say thanks to everybody who is helping out already. And you know, just the community, a large, very tough situation, so we are going to get through it. There's no other choice. But I just really like to thank our chief, Bob Brown, for the work he's done as the emergency manager and the system in place for it, along with Roland Showen and Joe Sirdich. So you guys could have your hands full. I know you're prepared and preparing the community, and I think everybody here should be know that they're in good hands. So thank you all very much. That's it. Good night. I wish I was checking out.
Thank you, Counselor. For my report, I just kind of reiterate the part with our meeting with the emergency personnel last week. I literally was floored with how much thought Bob, yourself, as the emergency management and Joe and Roland have put into this whole thing. You know, I've been working with you guys for, you know, around you for twenty plus years, so I shouldn't be surprised, but I was anyway. I mean, really, a lot of thoughts been gone into it. The whole area, I mean, how you guys are all working together with other communities and, you know, higher up groups, so that was nice. Somewhere in one of these reports, I seen that Counselor Lance had an anniversary on a fire department, looked like three years, I think, so congratulations to him on that. And yes, we did reopen up the disc golf course. You know, I'll just say that everybody's expecting the users to give themselves a little distance in between each other. And if you're all standing right together when you're, when you're, when you're mini disc golfing or whatever you call it. I'm going to start getting complaints and we may have to do something about it, so just try to keep that in mind when you're down there. They're expecting people to keep their social distance even during recreation, so we hope we don't have problems with that. And just lastly, it's nice to see that things are loosening up a little bit. That leads me to believe people that know more about what's going on than myself are thinking that we can do some opening up if we do our social distancing. So it's good to see, hopefully, we can dig our way out of this and get back to life as we know it. So, council, any questions on that before we move on? All right, the consent agenda, we'll move on to. Oh, God, I missed every report, sorry. Everybody's going, oh, look, we don't have to talk tonight. All right, I'll jump back. Building official, Mandy, you got a report tonight? Unmute.
I'm sorry, I'm still working on my background here. I don't have a report tonight other than what is on the agenda. If there's any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer.
Council, any questions? Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a question for Mandy. Do you think, I don't, we don't do much or we haven't done much as far as when it comes to the planning and zoning? I know some of our ordinances might be out of date, you know, from nearly nineties, things might have changed. Do you think this might be something that we should be looking at, at maybe updating or the council coming to, you know, some kind of?
Yes, so what happens, yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me for interrupting.
Oh, you're good.
What happens is when we work on the comprehensive plan, that's when all the land use ordinances get updated. So I know we are working on securing somebody to do our comprehensive plan. I know I need to meet with Bill on that. But once we start on updating that, that's when all our land use ordinances are updated, and that's when the Planning Commission will get involved in that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yep, our next scheduled meeting is May fourth, and I'm hoping to have that in the council chambers. If not, we'll schedule a Zoom or a teleconference call.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Counselor, if you can, like you said, again, if you can mute your microphone, if you're not being used, that'd be appreciated. I see a few of you popping in on things. Engineer Jim, report tonight?
I have no formal report other than what's on the council agenda, but would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Jim, I have just a quick question.
Certainly.
Yesterday, Larry mentioned there was going to be a walkthrough on thirteenth today. Did they do that?
I talked to Larry just a few minutes before the council meeting tonight by phone, and he was not able to attend the meeting. But from what Larry reported, and Larry, please chime in, but the settlement was sufficient enough that they do plan to take out the existing base course. Get it, make sure it's got the proper density and the proper moisture content, backfill it in with the aggregate before we patch in the base, before we put on the final wearing course surface. It'll probably be sometime in June, but that's exactly why we wait, let them go through one freeze thaw cycles to have that stuff show up before we put on the wearing course.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I can concur there too, John. It was, Mr. Mayor, it was, there was a, it was a, many different little things going on down there today. So they never did call me to meet, I probably would have met with them, but it's really not a big deal. We did do a walkthrough that last week and identified some of the, some of the things. And really, I think the contractors, they know there's a bunch, almost prefer that, it kind of seemed like they almost prefer that to take care of the stuff that they know before we even have a formal walkthrough. So all the televising was done today of the infrastructure there. Initially, I looked, I reviewed a couple of videos and everything went great so far, and everything was great, they said. So we'll have all that to review and we'll dial in on that, but yeah, so we don't lose track about it. There was no formal walkthrough today, but there will be.
Okay. Larry, you have a report tonight, as long as you're on?
Yeah, I have a few updates. I know a few of you for sure on the council appreciate it, so I was very streamlined last meeting, not knowing how everything would go. Can everyone hear me okay? Is it crackly or anything? Because I do, I only have two bars in my office, and we don't have Wi-Fi here yet, but we're working on it, so.
I think you're good. You're good on my end.
Okay, all right, great. So I'll give you a few updates because there are some challenges and some things we're working through. First and foremost, and I gotta just really thank Margaret again for just the help of the casual labors. And especially with our current work restrictions and stuff like that and social distancing, as it sits right now. I think we're going to drop the hiring to twelve initially instead of sixteen, unless there's, unless there's some further discussion or, you know, council really, really wants to push with the sixteen. And the reason for that is we can't, we're not, we're going to try to eliminate the multiple people in vehicles, so then we don't have enough vehicles. Well, we're not going to rent vehicles, probably. And then some of the work just isn't happening this year. The baseball probably isn't going to be used, the baseball fields, volleyball, that type of thing, because there's going to be more than ten people. Everything I see is Governor Walz, if he does or does not even extend the stay at home order, the social distancing rules will probably still be applied. So those things just aren't going to be happening. Flag football, so Larry, you know, Pervan Anzi or Building Grounds guy, he's pretty confident that he won't need as many people as he normally does. Although there are going to be other projects that we do want to complete when those aren't, when those aren't going on, so we want to take the opportunity as well. But we, we, we will have some challenges when it comes to the six foot distance and stuff like that. So we can certainly discuss if you, if you would like, but I think right now is the thought is to hire twelve. Two groups of six, I'm going to stagger them two weeks. There's some online training and stuff we have to do. Mandy's been working on that. Appreciate that too, Mandy. And, and we'll go from there. And then I think we leave open the option to hire those other four or maybe the twelve we get. You know, and two of them don't show up as much as we thought, or there's a family vacation or something, someone's health changes, so. Sorry for the extended conversation, but that's the thought, twelve out of sixteen right now.
Larry, I think that's appropriate to you, for you to be able to make that decision on what you need, so I don't see the issue there.
Okay, let me know if there is. We can, we can work through it. And then on the east side of town, when you come off of one sixty-nine, we've all seen the pole sitting there on the ground, generally speaking, they're vertical upright, huh? And St. Louis County called and said that one of the dump truck drivers took it down, and they will reimburse this fully for it. So I'm working to get Minnesota Power to put that back up as soon as possible. And, and I'll let you know. And then Bill was also informed of it, and I'll copy Bill once Eileen sent invoice after we get it repaired. On the utility side of things in the city, we have our sewer flow monitor test going on. It's a project we're doing to try to dial in on some of the infrastructure terrible sewer areas. And see if we can't do some things on our end to help our infrastructure and our, our customers, our residences, so. We, thanks to Bob Brown and his contacts and friends, we were able to get an emergency two week burning permit, so we can continue the burn pile. Like Bob stresses, he'd rather see us burn it, you know, weekly or twice a week or whatever it is, so it doesn't get out of hand, you know? And we don't want this rubbish and leaves and everything else that collects out there all over the city and all over the ditches and parking lots. We are able to burn for at least the next two weeks, so we're going to keep an eye on that and proceed with caution and. Then. We started sweeping again today. We're grinding stumps, haven't been able to grind stumps in a couple of years, and we're doing that. And removing trees, we got a little list, there's a couple more on the list, and then we'll lose our stump grinder. It gets borrowed out quite a bit, you know, and it's, it's, it's a rental with the range cities. And lastly, we're scheduling the, the skating rink demo for Tammy. And, and for our kids, of course, they're the ones that need the new, the new skating rink shack. And we're going to rent an excavator with a thumb, so we can haul the material ourselves, saving considerable amount of money there. Also, getting that demolition over to the landfill, and then the cement and everything we'll put out at our site, and that'll eventually get crushed into road material. With that, we have some of those sewer repairs that I just mentioned, that we're also going to share that excavator for, so you can just do it. We have the backhoe that the water department, sewer department uses, but it doesn't have a thumb. And with an excavator, you can just do, you can probably do three, four hundred percent more work with the excavator than you can of the wheeled backhoe. So that's some of the stuff going on in Public Works. Usually you have questions, I'm welcome to those, and any other updates I may have missed. But of course, there's always tons of little things going on, but those are the highlights for you.
Thank you, Larry. Council, questions for Larry?
I have a question. Counselor Campbell. Oh, Larry, have you been getting any complaints on the roads out of the cemetery at all?
Never, no.
Was it being muddy or anything?
No, not at all, and I welcome anyone to take a ride out there, so when we discuss what should we do with our alleys in town. You know, that was one of my earlier projects after being hired last year and stuff. And it just, it really worked out with the contractor that was in the area, and we got really good pricing, and we weren't sure, and should we try it? We weren't sure of the infrastructure at the cemetery underneath those roads, but if you take a ride out there, I am just, I'm very, very happy with where we ended up.
Yeah, I haven't really had complaints, but I just get a lot of questions, I know, but not really complaining. And when I tell them we're saving a lot of money doing our infrastructure work out there without having to retard and everything, they kind of like, oh, yeah, I suppose, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm blown away on how firm, and you know, like on some of these gravel roads, the frost comes on, and it's a big whoop that was never there before. We don't even have that out there, so it's really great. I'm, I'm really, I'm really excited about it and happy about it. And really, if, if anyone's unsure or just wants to reaffirm, just take a ride out there and see it. It's just, it's amazing. I love it. It's great. It turned out really well. Council, any other questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Fire Chief Bob, report tonight?
I unmute there. Good afternoon, honorable mayor, council members, city administrators, city attorney, staff members, and the public. As far as emergency manager, not much more to update than what you learned last week, and I sure appreciate all the compliments of what's been happening with our group. If this would have been, you know, like a major storm incident that would involve Public Works, if it involved a missing person, that would be law enforcement driven. As an emergency manager, I'm not more important or any smarter than the rest of these people, just the way the hierarchy works. FEMA on a national level would reach out to the states, the Homeland Security Emergency Manager then reaches out to the county, and then I'd be the go to point person for our community, so it's kind of how those things work, so. What's happened with the Friday plan, we've been quite busy. We've had seven calls to date so far this month, fifty-two total this year. And thanks for bringing up the anniversaries. Adam Lance and Paul Brown both have three years of service with the department. And my Assistant Chief, Chris Masusi, has sixteen years with the department. And we are in the wildland season, only in Minnesota. Two days ago, we were in red flag warnings and snowed. And thanks, Mr. Falstad, for bringing up the burn pad. And as I'm getting ready for the Zoom meeting here tonight, I'm listening, and please put the caution out to everybody, the thin ice. They had an eight-year-old that went through the ice, I think it was up in the Ely area. I've had help from Larry Pervan Anzi acquiring some much needed sanitary wipes. We have hand sanitizer on order yet. And thanks, Counselor Lance, for bringing up the homemade mask initiative by the governor and the lieutenant governor, which will be this Saturday, as he pointed out. The one thing they were recommending, when you drop them off, if you could have them in a Ziploc bag, and we'll work with our high risk areas and stuff. The training that we had, I was really worried about that also, just having meetings with the department, but the webinars we've been getting from Central Lakes College have been great. We're with the orders we have, you know, a lot of the training we do is contact training, and we can't do any of that this time. We've had some great trainings on alarm systems, on our monitoring systems with our four gas meters. This past Thursday was the difference between using fog or straight stream or how we attack fires. This coming Thursday, tomorrow night, we're going to be getting a class on wildland fire training, which is perfect for this time of year. And a couple of the other ones coming up would be the COVID nineteen update for our group. And another good class coming up is first on scene and positive pressure ventilation in passenger vehicles, so we have a good slate of training all the way through May. The Fire Marshal Investigator in our area was very complimentary to the department on how the Tom and Jerry's fire was a major fire incident with minimal damage held and how they attacked that fire. And then a couple of weeks ago, the fire out on Powers Road, the kitchen fire we had. You always hear me talking about the big three, the way we keep ourselves warm, preparing food in open flame, and that one was started in the kitchen. Can't stress the importance of washing our hands and following the lead of the Center for Disease Control and the Department of Health. Any questions for myself?
Council questions? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Library Katie, report tonight?
I do. Good evening, everyone. Debbie and Michelle are working on setting up a virtual book club. There's currently a statewide book club that's being implemented. It's called One Book, One Minnesota. And it looks like we're going to be participating, participating in that. The book that everyone is looking to read is Because of Winn-Dixie. Other than that, I'm just going to encourage everyone to follow us on Facebook and check out our website. We're going to be posting updates on how we plan on moving forward with the summer reading program. And just any other changes that come up in the foreseeable future. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council questions for Katie? Police Chief Vern, report tonight?
Just a quick one, sir. Just update the council. I know we budgeted for cameras throughout town, and I've been working with IRN on that camera system. Currently updating pricing and locations, so we have a firm grip on exactly what we'll get. I've been working with Larry Falstad from Public Works on some cost-saving measures with that, what they can do for it, and setting some poles and stuff to get the best coverage for our parks and throughout town. And you will be going up, they'll be up and running with their system next week, which will have full access to it, so it'll give us a good hands-on look at the system, and if that's the one we fully want to go with. But we're moving ahead on that, just to let the council know, since that was a budgeted item. We're moving ahead. And the other thing, I just want the people at home to know and council to be aware of. It's that time of year again that we're, we're looking at starting blight. One of the things that we're having an issue with is, you know, trying to keep minimum contacts down with our officers. So we're trying to figure out exactly how the best way to do that, but as complaints come in, we are handling them. And one of the complaints that start to come in pretty heavily is pigeons again. And we have been getting complaints on pigeons. We do have people that are feeding the pigeons, both knowingly and unknowingly. But once you get pigeons to come to your property and you get a visit from the law enforcement telling you to stop feeding for a while, it's a serious issue. So please heed the warning. We do have ordinances against feeding wildlife, pigeons, deer, and waterfalls. So heed the warning, so we don't have to write citations for feeding pigeons, please. And that's all I have.
I've got a question. I've got a question. This is Counselor Campbell. I did get a phone call regarding that pigeon that you're talking about, and I think they might even mention my name, I don't know. But I don't think they were feeding the pigeons knowingly. I think they were feeding the birds and the pigeons. I don't think they were feeding the pigeons knowingly. I think they were feeding the birds and the pigeons are coming, you know, and and uh. Concerned, you know, why, why can't I feed the birds? It's like, well, you know, the birds are um. The pigeons are coming because of the birds, I I think, but um, I don't think they were knowingly feeding the pigeons like their neighbor was insinuating, so.
You're, you're exactly right, uh, uh, Tracy, and that's usually people's um, um. Excuse or reasoning is, hey, I'm, I'm just feeding the chickenies or the, you know, the stonebirds, which, which is allowable. Um, however, once the pigeons start coming to their place, that's why we pay them a visit and say, okay, well. Now, you know, your intent isn't, and you're not purposely um, feeding the pigeons, but you knowingly know they're coming now, so. Uh, in order to, you know, stop that and uh, put the complaints, please stop feeding for a couple of weeks. Until they go away, um, and we will monitor to make sure that they're not actively feeding for that time.
And and any complaints, I um, this person, the neighbor took it upon themselves to put something into their feeder. I don't know to deter, which wasn't right, but. Anyway, that's beyond the point, side of point, but.
Right, yeah, we investigated this one.
Thank you.
Council, anything else for Vern? Thank you, Chief. Rec Director Tammy, report tonight.
Just a short one, um, well, recreational activities are pretty much to a halt, but I'm still trying to be positive about things. So as far as the summer rec program, we have Kathleen Skerla and Tara Anderson hired as the directors. I know that program isn't gonna start in June like we typically do. Uh, my next recourse is, is looking at maybe just in the month of July for four weeks. Um, and I don't know if that's gonna happen. We have three train applications for the summer rec aid positions. I'm going to wait till the May fourth date to see what the governor is gonna do. Uh, because again, we have to interview them. If there's anybody over eighteen, they have to be fingerprinted, so there would be direct contact with our PD. And of course, they would have to go for their drug and alcohol screenings and maybe some people wouldn't be comfortable going through that. But we're, we're just, you know, going day by day with that. And yes, the golf uh, the disc golf courses is open. People are pretty happy about that, but they need to do their social distancing. Um, so I would, I'm looking into two thousand and twenty-one already. And um, in my budget, I had requested lighting for the south side walking trail and we're looking at some possible grant opportunities for lighting. Um, through R triple R B with the Regional Trails Grant and Larry and I are kind of looking into um, MP and L. And maybe being able to do that uh, project even less expensive than I first anticipated. So just trying to get ahead on some other things and the skating shack is coming down, so we're excited about that. And we have something on the agenda with that later.
Thank you, Tammy. Council questions for uh, Tammy?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I know we just talked a little bit about this, but. Can you just give us a little bit more of a clarification on the parks, please, Tammy?
Okay, many times parks and playgrounds get a little bit confused. Parks are an open space. Playgrounds are a playing entity. So our parks are open, but our playgrounds are not. Our basketball courts are not, our skate park is not. But our disc golf course is. So there is a little bit difference. A lot of times people, when they say, oh, parks are open, they think the playgrounds are open. But no, there's no way for us to continue to clean those on a daily basis. And our most wonderful asset in our community is our children, so we need to keep them safe, so. Would be my recommendation that we continue to keep those playgrounds closed until the moving target changes.
Council, anything else there?
I was just gonna say thank you for that clarification and um, Police Chief Vern, um, or do you think um. We should have maybe, if there's kids playing at the playground, maybe just have the. Please just stop by and kind of give them a reminder.
Yeah, we've been, and it's funny because the disc golf course opened today and we already got someone saying they're not, whoever's there is not practicing social distancing. Um, we've been pretty busy, busy the last several days with uh, in custody and calls, uh. We've really ramped up uh, what's been going on here, but um, but I, I have instructed the guys that they see. Kids on the playground equipment or if, you know, people aren't, you know, practicing that social distancing, so you just give them the reminder and. And so we can do that.
Thank you, Vern. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I, can I state one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know, I, I'm being very positive tonight and unlike Larry from um. Full stat, he was still showing snow in the snow blower and stuff. You must really love that snow blower. And so I'm trying to show positive and I've got open water behind me, so, you know, thanks spring, thanks cover.
What do you mean he likes it? He's selling it, buying a new one tonight? All right, so we'll move on. Uh, City Attorney Lindsay. Any report tonight?
Uh, agenda only tonight unless the council has any questions.
Well, I call you looking dapper with that beard. Hey, uh, Brian, are you uh, in uh, agreement with regard to playgrounds? Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure I understood that the same way as it was just explained between Chief Manor and Tammy. Uh, are, are playgrounds really are supposed to be closed?
Sure, uh, well, here, I'll, I'll, actually, I'll, I'll jump on with a couple of things that uh, that are related to the comments. Uh, first, with regard to playgrounds, uh. I, I don't think, at this point, my opinion at least, is that the executive order doesn't require them to be closed. But I think that um, Ms. Devlin brings up a good point. That unless we have the staff to keep them clean, keep them sanitary and be able to keep them safe, the executive orders are clear. That the cities reserve the right to restrict access to those areas where they don't have the manpower to make sure. The second comment that I'll jump in with, we've, we've talked about uh, the disc golf course and social distancing. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that that social distancing isn't a recommendation or it's not something the city's asking to do. That's part of the Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Guides, which is incorporated as the requirements of the executive orders. So those are actually the, the social distancing are requirements and we should get some signs up uh, around the parks, just to point people to. Resources where they can learn more about the responsibility.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So I think we're doing the right thing there at this point then, other than maybe signing it stone at that disc golf. Council, any other questions for Brian with regard to that?
Yeah, I do. Um, I, I guess I have a little bit of a different opinion on the park. Um, myself personally, one of the issues that I have with. Not having at least a park available is the daycare issue. And we deal with that at both the Vaughn and also at the Chisholm Elementary School. And so what I'm wondering is, is it possible, I'm not against keeping the parks closed, but is if. Is it possible to open the parks for a limited time for the daycare at the school? As long as the adults who are working can take wipes with them and wash down when the kids are done. Or because they don't really have a lot to do with the kids when the parks are closed.
So you actually meant playground when you, right?
Yeah, the playground, playground.
Travis, you know, I, I let anybody speak here, but my opinion is we could certainly have the discussion because it doesn't. Uh, you know, we're not barred from opening them. We're just, like you said, it sounds like we don't have the resources to do it safely. So the possibility that they have the resources to do it safely at the school or whatever, I mean, we could, I don't, I would certainly have the discussion anyway.
I think it's a worth worthwhile discussion. I mean, it doesn't have to be a long discussion, but you know, maybe it has to be a long, even that feel that way. I don't know. A quick discussion if that's the case.
Yeah, you know, if you want to field it and, you know, we can have a talk about it or whatever, like you said, uh. You know, main thing is uh, when people are, or when the kids are on playground equipment, you're trying to. Social distance, I'm gonna be able to clean it after, so somebody else goes on it, they're not an issue, so that's very difficult to do, I think. So.
If I, I can throw my two cents in there, not what it's worth, but um, I understand the playgrounds, kids are touching everything, they're calling over everything. But if you got uh, you know, people are going to a disc golf course, I, I don't see the harm in opening up the skate park. You know, if the kids are going around to go on a skateboard, they're not, there's not two kids on a skateboard, there's not two kids on a bike. Um, you know, you get a post that you want to keep the social distancing, but that's an activity that the kids can use where they're not touching a whole bunch of different things, you know, they're not calling around the. Skate park, you know, like they would a playground, but you know, if you're gonna start. Cutting this into pies and saying what is and what isn't, nobody's gonna know what they're allowed to do or not to do.
All right, like you said, it'll be an ongoing discussion. I mean, we can talk about all this. My guess is we're gonna slowly see things loosen up here as we move forward, so hopefully we can get back to some semblance of normal.
Yeah, well, let me just throw this in there too, because we had a staff meeting today at the school. And uh, Dr. Ventura informed us that at their latest um, superintendent meeting. Uh, they didn't, they were not saying that the possibility of kids coming back is, is possible. Um, at the ground, they have not been told that um, distance learning will carry out through the end of the year. So we had the discussion about what it would look like having kid back in the school, so that it is a possibility.
Okay. Are you on a computer or iPhone there or tablet or a, you sure got a slow connection? You, you, your mouth is already closed before you hear the words, so they're in, so. All right, we'll move on. Uh, City Administrator, Bill, report tonight.
Mr. Mayor, no formal report, but I will answer any questions.
Council, anything that ain't on the agenda? All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. This is the list of bills. Communications, which are the airport authority minutes. Fire Department minutes, Chisholm Chamber newsletter. Minutes of the previous city council meeting, April first, twenty twenty, the special meeting. Payroll and overtime. Before I get a motion to approve it, I would like to just note a change that we found on page eleven. We can get you to flip over there real quick. Um, fifth line up from the bottom, third line over from the right, our third word over from the right says April, it's supposed to say May. That'd be correct, Bill?
That, that is correct, Mayor. The Manny was referring to the next meeting, which is actually the May meeting. It was not a meeting scheduled for April.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to uh, accept the consent agenda with that one little minor change.
I'm gonna make a motion. This is Counselor Fountain.
Okay, motion by Counselor Fountain, second for that.
Counselor Campbell.
Okay, second by Counselor Campbell. Um, any other discussion? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance?
Aye.
Counselor Fountain?
Aye.
Counselor Vaki?
Aye.
Counselor Varda? Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, no unfinished business. I bet if you asked Administrator Manny, he would say, yeah, right, but uh, we'll move on to new business. Uh, Mandy, quote from Range Cornish and Roofing for Library Re-Rough Project.
Yes, um, Katie and I have been working with Terry Marty from Range Cornish and as you know, we did um. Awarded the bid for the flat roof to them. And that will be beginning in another couple of weeks, but we did want to add on a gutter system. And then we wanted to upgrade where the sloped portions of the roof are to a metal firestone. Um, material that's really gonna last probably the lifetime, time of the building. We won't have to worry about it again. So we wanted to add that quote um, along with the flat roof quote that you had previously approved.
Uh, okay, thank you, Mandy. Bill, uh, it sounded like you'd prefer to take some of this money out of the uh, the buildings fund or something like that, so that we're not. Wiping out uh, Katie's budget she needs for some interior stuff. Would that be correct?
That's correct, Mayor. I, I feel that Katie did a nice job of writing a grant to get forty thousand dollars worth of money. And uh, to have to spend it all on the roof, I, I don't feel is appropriate nor fair to Katie. Because she had other intentions for that money, so um, uh, I feel this additional funding uh, should come out of the. The building budget or the contingency that is set up. Um, I know one thing in conversations with Manny, it, it's estimated that this, this um, upgraded roof system. Will add twenty-five years to estimate useful life. And being that those gutters are original, they, they should be replaced.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
I'd like to make that motion to uh, um, go ahead and accept that uh, bid for the. Pre-finished metal gutter system in the um, UCF roof system um, area for fourteen thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars.
I'd like to second that for discussion, just quick.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Fountain. Go ahead, Counselor Fountain.
So with this Range Cornish uh, and roofing, I would like um. I would like to make sure that they um. When they start the job, they can't go over the bid, what they're already bidding. They can't add extras or try to add on money. Um, I've done a little bit of research and this seems to be the case with this particular. Um, company, so can we um.
Can we go? Yeah, any change orders that happen would come before you for approval. I don't anticipate any change orders at all with the project. Um, I agree with Bill in saying that Katie worked really hard to get a grant um, for the building and the building has other issues in it. And I think once we get the roof complete, all of the work that, that we're doing. We won't have to do over again because they're gonna actually fix the problem. Per se, there's, I, I don't anticipate any change orders at all unless they tear off that roof and find something. Completely not right, which I, I hope that wouldn't happen, but. This is all of the materials and labor for the whole roof system.
Okay. April, does that help?
Yes, that helps a lot. Thank you very much.
Yeah, like you said, you know, you, there is an unknown, there always is one unknown and that's when you pull that roof off, if everything under there is completely rotted. That you just can't foresee that stuff and that becomes a whole different issue, so we hope you catch them soon enough. So we don't have to have that discussion. So we do have motion support. Any other discussion? Okay, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance?
Aye.
Counselor Fountain?
Aye.
Counselor Vaki?
Aye.
Counselor Varda?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
And Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. We'll move on to number two, Aspen Grove land purchase, uh, page twenty-one. Manny, you want, since you started with uh, the owners, I'll let you start.
I was contacted um, by the couple who, you have a request. Um, they own the Aspen Grove Assisted Living Facility in the industrial park. They had requested to purchase the lot across the street from their current facility right now. To build a new facility and what they're doing is they're requesting to purchase that lot for a dollar. Um, and then be reimbursed what the tax, the, the value of the property that is. Now the current tax value, um, once a certificate of occupancy is approved. Meaning that the, the building is done. Meaning that the, the building is done and complete and ready for occupancy.
Manny, just to add to that, uh, the owners actually requested that we, the earnest money only be ten thousand dollars, as opposed to ninety-five, too.
Right, right. It's all in the, in the letter that you have before you.
Uh, let me add, I, I actually spoke to the owner today as well, um, the, the, uh, project would approximately double the size of the facility that they have up here right now. They have, uh, forty employees right now and, um, he, his tax base on those three initial buildings, he said it's about seventeen thousand dollars a year. This would basically double that size and he, he feels he would have to add thirty new employees to uh, make up the difference. He can get some, uh, little bit of, uh, what do you call it, um, leak over from the other buildings or whatever, uh, you know, use some in both areas, uh, since already across the street. But, uh, he figured it would be, you know, all of another seventeen thousand dollar tax base plus another, uh, roughly thirty employees. I did ask him if he believes it would be substantially completed within one year. He said he intends to build it this year. Obviously, he has some concerns of the coronavirus. And if he can get a contractor, uh, when he's gonna be able to do that, but he has every intention of having the thing all framed up by, uh, you know, by, by snowfall, uh, should, uh, we allow him to move forward. So, um, obviously, I would make the recommendation we do this. I, that number, uh, that he suggested ten thousand, he, you know, he was trying to get out from under the whole ninety-five thousand because it makes it easier for him to go to the bank if he doesn't need to put ninety-five thousand dollars of unwanted money on top. I would, uh, maybe ask the attorney if he'd like to chime in. There's a couple of things that I'm, there's, there's that concern, uh, you know, basically it's earnest money either way that we're getting back or we're giving back. And then the other thing is that Mandy and I talked about earlier, you'll see in some of the paperwork that back in, uh, July of nineteen ninety-eight, uh, it's page twenty-three of our packet. Uh, it shows a purchase price of a dollar. We weren't really actually able to figure anything out there, but, uh, obviously, maybe, uh, Attorney Lindsay, uh, would we catch if there's some issue there during a title search? When we actually sell the property or how does that work?
Yeah, as part of the sale process, we'd have to do the title background and, and any flags would come up there.
Okay. Attorney Lindsay, I, I, you know, um, I mean, we're not, I mean, we could, we, man, let me back up. Mandy, what did we do for the snowmobile club? Do you recall? We, we did a kind of a cut rate on theirs as well to help them out, didn't we? I don't recall what that was.
I do believe we did require the total estimated value of the land. Brian, do you remember Attorney Lindsay? Do you remember when we did that? I do believe that we did require that and then they will receive that back upon certi- certificate of occupancy. That estimated land value was far less than this is. Um, I believe that was estimated at about twenty-five thousand dollars. This one is estimated at about ninety-five. So it is a different value.
Yeah, for some reason, I recall that it was estimated at like twenty-five and we went down to about fifteen or ten or fifteen, if I recall, about half of it. Anybody on council remember that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill. Uh, if I recall, if I recall, uh, we went down to ten thousand. I don't have anything in front of me and that's just off of memory. But I do believe that we did reduce it down to ten thousand.
Counsel, um, uh, chime in. How do you feel about ten thousand earnest money to allow them to do that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
This is Counselor Campbell. I think this is a great idea. I mean, he's gonna employ thirty more people. He's doubling his, his business here, putting them on the tax rolls. I think it's a great idea and I support it.
Okay.
I agree.
Somebody wanna make a motion to allow the ten thousand earnest money?
I would make that motion, Mr. Mayor, as a Counselor Campbell, to, uh, make that motion for purchasing of ten thousand dollars.
To be returned, to be returned everything except the dollar upon substantial completion?
Yes, to return everything but the dollar upon substantial completion. Are we giving them a year then or?
Yeah, we will, we will. Brian can, if he wants to put something in the purchase agreement to say something about the coronavirus, uh, you, you know, barring some pandemic, uh, creating an issue, but he has every intention. He's already got the building pretty much designed, they're ready to go, so.
Okay. So that's what my motion will be then, to, um, for substantial completion within a year. Pending the coronavirus epidemic, pandemic, I mean, um.
Counselor Lance, you seconded that?
Yes.
Uh, Brian, you have anything to add?
Uh, really, no?
Nope, just two items, Mayor. I did poll, I've actually got all my electronics files here. It looks like with the, uh, Pathbinder Snowmobile Club, we went to five thousand from the, from the total, uh, praise or assessed amount for tax purposes. And then with regard to the, uh, this purchase agreement, what I would probably insert would be a clause that indicates that if the, if there's gonna be a delay caused by the COVID nineteen situation, we would, we would review the contract with him in a year.
Okay. Counsel, anything else to add? Okay, we have a motion in support, um, Margaret.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, do we have to talk about the parcel number? Purchase of the parcel?
Yeah, it should probably be part of the, uh, Mandy, do you have the actual, I mean, are you able to tell us what the parcel number is? Oh, I guess it's on the last page.
The parcel number is included.
So, Mr. Mayor, I amend my motion to include parcel number zero-two-zero-dash-zero-two-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-six-four-zero.
Okay, yep, that is the correct number. And Counselor Lance, amend the second?
Yes, I amend my second.
All right. Mayor, I have a question. This, Mayor, I have a question. This is Jim.
Yes.
To Brian or Bill or Mandy, uh, is just, uh, determining, uh, when you talk about the word substantial completion? Or is it in terms of getting the certificate of occupancy? It's just a clarification. What substantial completion or should it be at the, uh, when Mandy gives the, uh, certificate of, uh, occupancy? It's just clarification. I don't know the answer.
Brian, you wanna chime in on how we normally do that?
But I would, I would think in this situation, we wanna look at the occupancy.
What was that, occupancy?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can chime in, I do believe the last two transacts, actions were certificate of occupancy.
Okay, all right. Counselor Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That's in your motion?
Do you want me to amend my motion to, um, from some substantial completion, which we've done in the past, just so you know, to, uh, certificate of occupancy? I changed it.
I amend my second.
All right, let's take a vote.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye, one hundred percent.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Mandy. Larry, you're up next, uh, purchase eight-four-two-D snowcrete snowblower.
And to Vern, the only way I'm getting rid of this picture is if you let me buy it. So this is a snowblower here, you're seeing it in the background. Um, we did our research and we went to Ely. Ely has one. And actually, I was, um, I'm from up in that area, Tower Stanley, familiar. And I was, uh, reading a local, I get the local paper there as I do the Chisholm paper and I was having coffees Saturday morning, reading this article about the new snowblower. And it was just, it worked out really well that I got hold of the, sent them an email, got ahold of the administrator up there put us in charge of public works and we went and visited and watched them, um, with their snowblower there. And it's, you know, when you're making a purchase like this, you know, you gotta see it, you gotta touch it, you gotta, you know, talk to the folks that run it. We did that. And, um, and, uh, besides that, you know, and you see in this winter with the snowfalls that we had, what a workhorse these snowblowers are and, uh, the work that they do for wider streets and especially picking up big speed. And I don't have to go through the whole thing, you know, I'm sure you, you read in the council packet there, I'm sure you read thoroughly the hundred and fifteen pages. But, uh, we, we reprioritized, you know, uh, and felt that when our snowblower did go down for the three, four weeks in the early season there, it was just critical. It takes us three times estimated amount of time to pick up that snow after it snows. And then it still doesn't do as good a job as it could, so, um, we fully intend. There's not a real big market for our snowblower because, uh, our current snowblower, because of a hole that is. Uh, but if somebody was to approach us someday, I think we'd consider selling it and I'd come to the council and ask permission. But we're gonna use, keep that workhorse, we're down at the snow dump and pushing back these snow piles. Uh, and keep our new one, our nice one from, uh, Lake Street and, um, and, uh, some of our streets and stuff like that. This one is just a little bit smaller than our current, but with the technology and stuff, uh, we feel it's gonna be adequate and even comparable to what we, um, and, uh, on top of that, we're able to save around thirty-two thousand dollars by getting this holdover unit. Um, it was, uh, sitting in a, um, a showroom on the east coast, going to a show that got canceled because of the, um, the current, um, situation where and other than that, uh, we're pretty excited to present it to you and any questions you may have. Um, the, the money is budgeted for, but for a skid loader. And, um, you know, as a group, not me as a supervisor, but as a group, we all discussed the purchase and felt that it was our most, um, our most current need, uh, for public work over this skid loader.
To load a skid loader money towards the snowblower and.
Correct, yeah.
Also?
Travis, uh, I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of the snowblower for eighty-five thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars.
Second, Counselor Fountain.
Motion by Counselor Vaki and seconded by Counselor Fountain.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
So Larry, what are you gonna do with the old one? Are we gonna keep it for a spare in case, uh, we need it or are you gonna? I mean, you talked about selling it or junking it or, I mean, I don't know. What do you think?
Well, I, I think it's operational again and I think truly it's a workhorse. I mean, it's a, it's a brute. I mean, you could, you could mount this thing in front of a locomotive, I think. So we, we intend to keep it and we'll do the heavy, heavy work with it, like down at the snow dump or up at the school, where like when Min Dot came and held their snow off of the highway. Min, we were able to keep up with Min Dot as fast as they could dump it, we were able to blow it back. Um, you know, we don't have farm fields all over or, or big, what, you know, areas to put our snow, so, oh, you could see down at the snow dump. That pile will be there till July or August, I bet, you know? So we're gonna keep our big one for that. You know, you don't wanna ruin our brand new one down there, so I think we'll keep it. If we got a real good offer from neighboring community, I'd have to bring that to the council and consider it. But we'll keep it and we'll use it, um, we'll use it and keep it going. Uh, and if something breaks, then we have time to fix it, I think. You know, we may have to have a gear manufactured or something, so. Uh, but we'll, we'll keep it, I think.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
Do we need to, uh, make an emotion that, that earmarked, that money was earmarked for the loader or no?
I think it's all capital and, or, uh, capital equipment money anyway, so I don't think. Bill, would you agree?
Yeah, I think it's in the, um, it's in the packet and, um, you know, I, I guess I wouldn't hurt to put it in the minutes. Cause the, the reason I say that, Ma- Mr. Mayor, is the fact that, uh, one of the first things the auditors do when they come in is they sit down and read through all the minutes for the year. And if they look at the budget, the, it'll, it'll, it'll show them right there in the minutes that, uh, this money was earmarked for the skid loader. Went for the, the snowblower, so I think it's good to, uh, get it in the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Bill, and thank you, Tracy, for bringing that up. Uh, who made the motion? Tracy, did you?
Travis.
I did.
Travis, you wanna amend your motion so that it, uh, reflects on removing the money from the skid loader and we're gonna use it for a snowblower?
Yes, I will amend my motion that we are using the money that was earmarked for the, the skid loader and moving it to the smaller purchase.
And I'll amend my second.
Okay, good. Um, counsel, any other discussion? If not, we'll take a vote.
And Mayor, I have a comment for Larry.
Yep, sorry, Jim.
Hey, Larry.
Go ahead, Jim, you're pretty quiet.
Don't ever get rid of that, that winter picture, dude. I love that picture.
I know you do. You don't like the heat. That's the one thing we'll always disagree on. I prefer my pontoon boat and you prefer a snowmobile.
That's it. That's it. All right, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you all. Uh, Larry Ironman LED lighting upgrade proposal.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Counsel for the approval on the snowbar. I'll finish by saying that I was, wanted to just duly mention, uh, note that there's no shipping cost in that. The manufacturer's about eight hours away and the shipping, because it comes by semi, is, um, you know, on a semi trailer, of course, very expensive, uh, is over three thousand dollars, so I opted, uh, I think we'll send one of our employees, even with an overnight stay in a hotel. Uh, we don't need to spend three thousand dollars on a shipping of a snowblower when we can send, uh, one of our guys on a field trip and go get it. You know, we have, we have trucks and trailers and we'll make it work and, and save the city, uh, some money, so. Okay, yeah, moving on. So the LED lighting, very exciting, uh, stuff. I, I'm learning so much about LED lighting. And, um, we've done, I, I'll have more presentations for you in the future about the savings and rebate programs out there and stuff. But the, the amount of money is just, in my opinion, and I think you would share, it is just frankly mind blowing. Um, we've done a few LED projects now and, uh, yet have I seen a payback over two years. Um, if I could share the, the, what the council approved, the last year we did the globe project on the main street. That project, after the hundred and forty-eight globes or whatever it was, so seventeen thousand dollar project, the, the rebate was of six thousand dollars, it came in at a year. With the energy savings and the rebates, it came in at a year. So it's just, it's mind blowing that we can do these projects and the payback is a year and then the city saves on the utility bill monthly, you know, going forward after that. So that being said is the next project I propose. And the reason I say that is, and I have, wanna highlight that is my budget already because of this is gone. And so this would be out of, um, you know, savings in the general fund and other departments or, or, you know, out of our bank accounts, but the Ironman, I knew the lighting out there was considerable. I never realized how much until I ran, had a meter ran, which is in your council packet. A six-month average of almost four hundred dollars a month to light the Ironman. This project came back, if you're looking at page, it's a real nice breakdown on that page thirty-four. Um, it shows the, um, the, uh, kilowatts per hour or per month saved. And then the annual cost savings alone, and I like to highlight these numbers because these are the meat and potatoes there. The annual cost savings alone, just on the electricity bill, is twenty-eight hundred dollars. It's just, the number is just striking, twenty-eight hundred dollars. That's savings. Um, the Minnesota Power, um, uh, rebate is another twenty-four hundred dollars. And the estimated cost is seventy-five sixty. So in the first year, you paid for a third of it and the rebate pays for another third. And it'll take you one point eight-six years to pay off the rest. So you got an eight thousand dollar project and you'll have it paid off in less than two years and you'll be saving almost three thousand dollars a year on the utility cost.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
I, I think this is a great, uh, cost savings measure and we, I believe we should find the money somewhere to go ahead and do this. Um, as far as this helmet on the Ironman, you know, I really would like to see that working. We spent five thousand dollars alone just to put the blue streak down the stem of the water tower. And mining, um, was a major contributor to building what the Iron Rain. And mining um, was a major contributor to building what the iron ranges today. And I think it's important and it, you know, to have that that light working. So uh, that's just my two cents.
I absolutely agree.
I agree.
Good, council.
Especially and I agree.
So I'd like to make that motion if I could to go ahead with this LED upgrade and this upgrade to include um, the helmet lights also.
Support. The lens.
Counsel Campbell, Counselor Lance, uh, here's another page here he mentions uh, looking at some additional savings too. That's. Uh, that's only a good idea too, to look in the timers and see if we can do it with less lights and Larry, you didn't talk much about that, but uh.
No, no, I want, I wanted to give you the actual facts of what I'm presenting right now. And um, when uh, Mayor Champa says there is that I'm learning so much about the LED lighting and you know, it's smart lighting. It's it. It it can do things for you. So one of the questions I would raise is, we're doing, we have eight lamps up there now. We're gonna put eight LED lamps and that's your savings now. Yeah, one question I would propose to the council and anyone passionate about the Iron Man out there is. Do you need eight lights on at three in the morning? Or at two in the morning or at one in the morning or at midnight? Or do you need just three? You know, do you need? Yeah, the timers are somewhat expensive. Um, and uh, but they surely could be put on a timer. I don't know that. I think they're about two hundred bucks a piece plus the install. I'm sure there's another hundred, maybe two. But you're right, timers and what I'm thinking is, is I wanna come back to you and give you my recommendation. Uh, I mentioned it to the administrator Manny there and he said, well, Larry, how would you even ask my opinion without even, not even being dark out? And I thought, oh, you're right. So my thought is that I'll start with like the front two. One on each side and one on the back and see what five looks like. Maybe it's still lit up really well because of the quality of the lamps, um, you know, we're talking about. Maybe we only need four. Maybe we only need three. So I think what I'd like to do is, I just mentioned that I think there's some additional savings here. And I can come back to the council um, with a recommendation, maybe some pictures even of it in the dark.
No, that's a great idea, Larry. And um, I just say, say those LED lights are great. They're bright. And especially if you're gonna spend money on the helmet. You don't need as much light, you know, on the body. So when it gets, as soon as it gets dark, you drop down to a couple and then you really focus on that helmet. And it's gonna be a beautiful feature for uh, you know, the community.
Yeah, and and I'll note too that I know uh, Counsel Campbell's asked me a couple of times about the helmets. I put the estimate in there for you, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Larry.
So Larry, what do you want us to do? Just uh, give you approval to keep going on this and get a, to come back with a final on. Exactly what you're gonna do or what do you wanna?
Yeah, I I think first, because of the amount, the over the five thousand and the council has to approve it, there is the um. Is the, the first, the fixing the Iron Man and then if you want the helmet fixed. And then, then we can go and then we can maybe have the discussion, how far do you want me to keep going? I mean. The rebates are out there. It's a program. Okay, maybe we should stop there and and do the Iron Man first. John, do you agree?
When you say the Iron Man, the light on the helmet?
And uh, and the upgrade.
Yeah, I think we should do it all. I I, and I think if you see some savings along the way where timers or something might help and you. You feel it's light enough, I think we should uh. Uh, it it could be a second phase even, yeah. I mean, you could probably pull the bulbs out to see what it looks like at night uh, at the beginning. It's just how you wire it, how, what you could switch on and off, so. Depends how they're wired. If they're all one wire, it makes it a little bit tough, probably.
That's why we need the timer because they're all in series. It's one wire that goes to all of them. Well, it goes from one to the next, so we'd have to install timers, but um, like you said, I'm gonna start with five. And I'm gonna leave three disconnected and see if we like it, boom, you know, there's our, we got spare bulbs and we're saving additional savings, so.
Mr. Mayor. So we do have a motion and support. I'm not exactly uh, basically to do the project as Larry outlined.
Mr. Mayor, I believe my, my motion was to um, go ahead with the upgrade for the Iron Man LED lighting, and I think that included everything that he talked about.
Okay.
That includes the helmet, includes the helmet.
I agree.
All right. Counsel, any other discussion? You ought to agree with Larry on it. Uh, uh, these LED things are good. Uh. Every, every day you don't do the ones that have a good payback, uh, you're just wasted money at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor, this motion is just for the Iron Man right now?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Uh, if there's no other uh, conversation then um, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fountain.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, Larry, last item, LED upgrades.
Yeah, um, some direction on the council, obviously, uh, as stated, you know, in the, in the. I got, you know, we've come to the council with five thousand dollar and over projects like that. You know, do you want me to keep looking at projects? Um, especially these payback ones. Um, I I briefly spoke last meeting about like the, it doesn't, sometimes wouldn't be our top. Choice to do, say, a, a baseball field that only gets turned on twice a week for three hours or something. But really what we're looking for is the projects where the lighting is on for ten hours a day like City Hall or um. Or up at the arena or at the curling club, those types of paybacks where we can get um, maybe two year, three year or under. So in, 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 in talking, while Ed heard about it at the arena and um, and we're currently waiting for the numbers back from Minnesota Power on the arena. But if you can imagine, his, his um, electricity bill at the arena, eh, when he's functioning is six thousand dollars a month. And I think we can save considerable money and get in under that two year payback, we're thinking. And uh, then the curling club would be another one. City Hall, of course, you know, them lights are on. I don't know, maybe twelve hours a day, five days a week. Besides council meetings and that type of thing. Uh, and then the public works garage. Uh, one, what I would highlight is, some of you don't. You've never even been down there to have a walk through, but I I hopefully uh, intend to invite all of you. To have a walk down, uh, walk around the public works garage here before a council meeting when we can, but. Um. If we were to do a public works garage here and it was a two year payback. And then we decided to tear the place down in two years, we would have broke even. And then we can take these lamps that are good for twenty years and we can move them to another project. So that's, that's all I'm kinda thinking about it, that. Should we do some of these projects? Well, the payback's there. I think we should, so. I just was looking for a little direction. If you want me to keep going and presenting this to council or if I should put my efforts somewhere else.
Mr. Mayor, I think uh, this is Counsel Campbell. I think you could keep looking, Larry, it's saving us money, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. With that then, is that contract for Minnesota Power? The rebates that I talked about and I'll highlight once we have um, a full report for the council. But we're reaching like almost ten thousand dollars in rebates already. And then this is an additional ten percent on top of that from Minnesota Power. So you'd be getting another thousand dollars on top of that ten thousand dollars. And it's an agreement stating that we're gonna. Keep doing some of these uh, efficiency projects in the city. It's just a contract in good faith. There's no inspections or anything like that. And frankly, with you, we would qualify alone with um, the. You are just okay with the um, Iron Man upgrade. So it's really a formality to get council approval that I could send this um, contract with Minnesota Power for an additional ten percent.
Yeah, Larry, I would agree with Counsel Campbell that uh, whether we do them immediately or we wait till the next budget cycle. We should at least know what a lot of these costs and cost savings are gonna be. Uh, for the, basically everything you listed, they're, they're all good projects and sizable projects, you know, that we, we have the lights on quite a bit, so. You know, like I said, uh, Rena Curling Club, City Hall, Public Works Garage, uh, Water Plant, yeah, their lights are on all day on them. Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Uh, I'll make a motion to Larry to float this uh, contract and send it back to Minnesota Power.
Support, Jim Varda.
Okay, so motion by Counselor uh, Varda.
Nope.
And Vaki. Vaki, sorry. Seconded by Counsel.
I seconded it.
On the screen. Um. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? And. How, how do we feel about this Larry continuing on all these projects, bringing them back? I hate your audio. You're lighted, but.
Mr. Mayor, I I I like, I like Larry continuing, but I I also don't want Larry to just miss the baseball field and stuff, cause. I'm a big children's sports fan and I like the lights. I wanna play baseball.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I could see.
His answer for you is gonna be that uh, he's thinking about them, but because they're used so seldom that they're, it, it would probably. Uh, fall towards the bottom of his list because uh, the, the tur- the uh, the, the. Payback is so long because of the limited use. So would that be correct, Larry?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Eh, eh, you know, some of those projects might be like seven to ten years, which, they're still great projects because. But they're just not the ones that the city can see the immense, the immediate benefits.
All right, so we do have motion and support. If there's no further discussion. Um. Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fountain.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel.
We'll move on. Tammy, uh, bids for concrete slab block work at the new skating rink building. Page thirty seven.
We sent it out to four contractors and received only one for a total of eight thousand forty eight dollars. This does not include the concrete and block work. But I um, included a quote that Seppes gave me last year. Um, I did email them to see if they would honor the same price for Seppes, but I have not heard yet back from them, but I would imagine. It would be at least very close. Uh, Mr. Bugalas was like. Hey, is this for the kids? Yeah, I can give you a discount. So I think that would be good, but my recommendation that we would go with the low quote. The only quote.
So Tammy, this is eight thousand forty eight dollars. You're gonna do the slab and they're gonna. Put up the brick work that was, that we're gonna buy direct from Sappi?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. How old is your bid? It's about a year old from Sappies? Yeah.
Yeah.
Not even, eh? It's uh.
Yeah, nine, ten, yeah.
Yeah, ten months, okay. Counsel, um. I guess I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion with Counsel Varda. Support.
Much.
Counsel Lance.
Counsel Varda and seconded by Counsel Lance. Uh, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment for Tammy.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'd like to thank you for all your wonderful work, but I still think you should have made the building one foot bigger than our neighbors.
I try to keep it low budget.
Margaret, could you take roll call, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fountain.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Tammy. Uh, geez, I love voting like this. We should just do this every meeting. Yeah, right. Um, Jim Johnson, uh, number two here, resolution zero four two zero dash three four, accept bids and award contract. For Fourth Avenue Northwest Reconstruction Project. And pickleball court prep. Oops, wrong word, yeah.
Reconditioning, not reconstruction. Uh, if the council and mayor, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, if you'll change, uh, go to page forty six. I think we can get through this rather quickly. And on that page, you see the tabulation of bids. Uh, you see the engineer's estimate for this project was uh. About three hundred, a little over three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We had two very competitive bids that you see. Um, one for two hundred and forty six thousand dollars and the other one for two hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. Uh, the big difference that you'll see this year is the uh, price of our, by temp, excuse me. Item six, our bituminous swearing course surface. In the past years, we've been paying seventy five, eighty, up to ninety dollars. Uh, a ton. And this year, uh, as you see, as you go across. Uh, the two, uh, the engineer's estimate based on past years, which is a very good thing to use, was at seventy five dollars a ton. Our actual low bid is at fifty four uh, dollars a ton and the second bid was at fifty nine dollars and fifty cents uh, a ton, so. Uh, a remarkable cost savings on that. And then if you'll go to the next page, uh, forty seven, is the resolution. Uh, you see the two bids that we received and as the mayor uh, mentioned. Uh, it is the Millen overlay of Fourth Avenue from six feet south to Eighth Street North. Um, but it also includes um, some repair work and then the surfacing and the striping. Uh, in converting for Tammy, converting the tennis courts uh, into pickleball courts. Uh, and you see the breakdown of the costs uh, uh, with Fourth Avenue, Millen overlay being two hundred and thirty four thousand, three hundred and eighty seven dollars and thirty four cents. Uh, the pickleball court work being eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety four dollars for that total uh. Low bid price from KGM out of Angora for two hundred and forty six thousand, eighty one dollars and thirty four cents. And I would recommend uh, the approval of the award to KGM in that amount. And would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Vaki.
Is my audio better?
Yes, much better.
Okay, uh, I will make that motion to award the bid to KGM. In the amount of two hundred and forty six thousand dollars and eight, or two hundred and forty six thousand, eighty one dollars and thirty four cents.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counsel Vaki and seconded by Counsel Campbell. Uh, further discussion? I'll just make a comment to people on Fourth Avenue are gonna really be happy. Cause that's a bad street. Uh, Margaret, could you take roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Jim Johnson.
Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, Jim, how are you?
Good, Jim, how are you all?
Good. Uh, I just have a question about uh, uh, SEH in general.
Um.
Yes. As you know, I'm in the, I'm in the construction world and uh, the gentleman on the. On the uh, in the packets, uh, Matt Reed, I've, I've had uh. Not very good talks about with contractors about him last two years and I know of a couple contractors that won't bid jobs in Chisholm if he's on the job. So that makes me worry a little bit.
Um, I've heard that, but. I, I'm not worried about it. We're getting a good product, uh, and. This one, there just aren't many bituminous contractors in our area. Uh, and. But we're, we're also using uh, two consultants, uh, JPJ out of Hibbing and SEH out of Virginia, so. Um. Provide good, provide good work for us, good service at a very reasonable price, so.
Okay, just wanted to ask a question. Yep.
Jim, Jim Varda there. If uh, Counsel Varda, if I could just clarify, you were stating. And the, the engineer, not the contractor, correct?
Yes.
And Jim, Jim, are you referring to um, KGM or were you referring to SEH?
SEH.
Oh, okay, cause uh, I would just.
I had heard that, I had heard that comment in the past.
Okay, I've had um, just my little bit of dealings with Matt Reed, um. I thought he was the first um, engineer I've ever seen to stand up to a contractor, so I was, I was impressed. But I don't know from what avenue you're um, you're referring to there, Jim, so I just wanted to comment on that. And I never knew Matt Reed till the day I was hired here, so just wanted to comment.
Okay, we do have a motion support, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Margaret, um, could we take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fountain.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion does pass to adopt that resolution zero four two zero dash three four. Jim, your second item, SEH Professional Services Agreement for that project.
Thank you mayor, members of the council, and thank you for approving that contract. In conjunction with that project then, on pages forty-one, forty-two and forty-three, you'll see a proposal for an agreement for professional services from SEH, who was the engineer on that project. This would be for the construction services, dealing with construction management, the surveying and the construction observation of that project. On page forty-one, lower half, you see the services to be provided. Going on to page forty-two, the assumptions that were made. Then lower on the page, the proposed schedule. And then at the bottom of that page is the estimated fee of thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, which will be paid on an hourly fee basis for the hours actually worked. Quite frankly, with this type of a project, I'm anticipating there'll be less hours for the Millen overlay there. And so I don't expect it to get anywhere close to thirty-three, five, but sometimes things happen. But we only pay for the services we actually receive, so it's not a lump sum amount or anything like that. It's built on an hourly basis. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you would have, but I would recommend approval of that contract with SEH for construction services for this Fourth Avenue reconditioning project as well as the pickleball court overlay in the amount on an hourly basis, not to exceed thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Counsel?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, for the construction service agreement with SEH for Fourth Avenue West Reconditioning Project and to include the Millen overlay project and a stripping former tennis course to convert them to the pickleball courts for the amount of thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Not, not to exceed?
Not to exceed thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Thank you.
Is there a second for that?
Support Counselor Lance.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Further discussion? Margaret, take a vote please.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Nay.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Jim, your last item, resolution zero four two zero dash three five, accept bids and award contract for the Fourth Avenue Southeast Public Safety Building Water Main and Sanitary Improvement Project.
Thank you mayor, members of the council. Again, on this project, starting on page fifty-two, you see the tabulation of bids. We received bids on this also a week ago. Today, we had six bidders on the project. And you can see the various unit prices on this one, doesn't have bituminous paving on it. But also, starting on page forty-seven, we have the letter of recommendation from John Jamnik of JPJ Engineering, who was the engineer on the project. And they provide a walkthrough on each of the six bids that we received. What I want to point out is that the base bid included thirty-six inch reinforced concrete pipe to replace some old concrete pipe that didn't get, three hundred feet of it, that didn't get replaced when they tore down the old treatment plant and built a new central iron range sanitary sewer facility. But in the bids, we took an alternate one to, rather than using concrete pipe, we looked at an alternative of using polyvinyl chloride or PVC pipe. And then a second material alternative was using a triple wall, high density polyethylene. And on page forty-nine, you see that base bid that included that thirty-six inch pipe. Below that, you'll see what that value of the three hundred feet of thirty-six inch RCP was. Basically, it was bid at two hundred and forty-five dollars per foot. Then the PVC was bid, I don't remember exactly what that price would be, three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, I think, per foot. And then the high density polyethylene was two hundred and one dollars per foot. TNT is a subsidiary of Hammerland Construction who have done work in the cities. They did our northeast area project back in two thousand and ten. They've also done some of our aggregate crushing in the past. They actually did the repair work on the fire department floor. What, what's that, three or four years ago, as well as the back sidewalk into the library. In any event, I would recommend the approval of the contract with TNT aggregates. And it would be the base bid by using alternative to the high density polyethylene. Basically, it'll save us thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. As a result, I believe the resolution. Page, excuse me, just a minute.
Page fifty-six.
Thank you, Tracy. Yeah, there you see all six bids, what the base bid was and then what the bid items were. I would recommend approval of the contract with TNT aggregates, which would be in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, which reflects the base bid minus the RCP pipe, but plus alternate B or alternate two for the high density polyethylene, which would result in that cost of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. One other thing, in the budget or in the engineer's estimate for this that I had received was about three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. But I think there was some type of an error or a low estimate on that one, because if you remember at budgeting time, I was looking only at looping of the water main and that I had budgeted in our, this year's budget at three hundred thousand dollars, which would mean the construction cost was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think their estimate was low. As you can see by the bids that we did receive, big range from basically four hundred and ten thousand dollars up to six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, basically a fifty percent range in there. But I think the very good competitive bids, I would recommend approval of the contract with TNT aggregates in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
See Jim, I have a question. Do you think it's worth saving thirteen thousand dollars to go with the HDP instead of the?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Counsel, any other questions?
They're all structurally adequate for the purpose and loading and so forth that we're going to have, even with fire trucks coming in and over it. It's structurally adequate to handle those loadings. Probably actually, probably, probably actually also has a probably a longer life than concrete.
Okay.
Counselor Fulton?
Yes, sir. Resolution number zero four two zero dash three five in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred dollars to TNT aggregates LLC. Is that right?
Yes.
I'll second that, I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion by Counselor Fulton, second by Counselor Campbell. Further discussion?
Jim, you said this was fully budgeted, right? I'm just double backing.
At the time you did your budgeting, no Travis, because at that point, we were thinking, I was looking only at the water main looping. I was unaware that there was three hundred feet of sanitary sewer pipe on the backside or on the lake side of that that had not been replaced. It had been suggested when they were doing the demolition of the old wastewater treatment plant. But for some reason, they were lacking funding or something and that was not done. So we had a gentleman from Hibbing, Larry Gelpie, I don't remember his name, come over and televise that to check out the condition of that reinforced concrete pipe, the old existing stuff, to see if it was adequate to stay in place. And the finding was no, there were holes in it, the rebar was starting to show. It needs to be replaced and now's the time to do it before we start putting parking lot or streets on top of it.
Yeah, that was correct. It was televised by Damian at Rapid Ruder.
Okay, so we're adding the sixty thousand, three hundred to the project, which we didn't budget for.
That is correct Travis.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Travis, I guess it's going to be part of that whole funding package for the public safety building.
Sure, I just wanted to make a note.
Yep, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Bill.
Just a clarification too, if you recall, the, this, the water main looping was a grant request to CDBG and we did receive fifty thousand dollars towards this project.
So where does that put us in the number when you're answering what Counselor Vaki asked then?
We're probably about fifty thousand dollars short or additional, because we had budgeted, if I remember right, three hundred thousand in last year's budget. And this, and then the fifty thousand dollar, was it fifty thousand bill that we got? And then so take it up to the three ninety-six, seven, we're forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars short.
Okay. Okay, we do have motion in support to adopt resolution zero four two zero dash three five in amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred. There's no further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a comment.
Thank you.
And I'd like to loop in Counselor Lance and Chief Brown. If I'm mistaken, let me know guys. Jim, you said this company was one installed the fire hall floor?
Yes.
Would you be pleased to know that our floor moved when we backed engine two in?
Yeah.
So I questioned this company a little bit.
I think, so Counselor Varda is commenting that the floor is falling down again and everything's kind of going to hell over there. But I think that's more of a wear and tear and more towards the foundation of the building than that it's on the floor of their fire hall.
Okay, I, I had not heard any comments like that, didn't know any. Is it something that we need to get a structural engineer to look at it? Or is it the old floor or the new floor or?
It's considerable movement on the approach coming into the fire hall that ties into the exist, that existing new floor. So it could be that supporting wall on the north side of the building.
Okay, it's out under the sidewalk area, not on the floor, the replacement floor itself?
Correct. And there's some issues developing inside too, cracking and.
Okay.
Sounds like we need a new building.
I think so. I'm trying to push.
Margaret, could you take a vote please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes to adopt resolution zero four two zero dash three five and thank you Jim for that.
Thank you.
Brian, next items here, first of all, I want to say thank you for preparing these both for us at my request. And could you just give us an overview of the two items under you, Brian, please?
Starting first, Mayor, with the, the update on the Ironbound Studios. I would have, would have been more in the packet and it runs through a bit of the history. Just very simply, we served some notices of cancellations based on some defaults back on the twenty-first. There's been some discussions with the, the leadership of the ownership at Ironbound. Mr. Manny, myself, I had a conference with them to discuss things. Obviously, we were back at the last council meeting with some updated numbers and additional requests. At the end of the day, I had a conversation recently with, with Mr. Sepulveda from Ironbound. And basically, where things left and my understanding of where things were left was this. Based on some economic conditions, based on the situation with COVID nineteen, with things happening at the legislature, and just, just kind of a culmination of circumstances, it was my understanding that it was Mr. Sepulveda's intent to peacefully vacate the, the space at the Chisholm City Hall. That being said, he indicated that based on the restrictions and movements and the executive orders that have been passed by the governor in the recent weeks, he didn't believe that he would be able to vacate the premises. Obviously, by yesterday, which was the end of the cancellation redemption period. But more importantly, he didn't think that he would be able to do it at least out into mid-May, once until the restrictions get loosened up and he's able to get some folks moving around to move some property out of that space. And so at, at this point, another factor that we've got to consider is that the, the courts really aren't even open for business as far as holdover tenants or unlawful detainees are concerned. In fact, there's executive order, I believe, twenty dash fourteen, is specifically puts a moratorium on eviction type actions. And so at, at this point, I think it makes some sense in the coming weeks just to try and work with the, the leadership at Ironbound to help facilitate a smooth transition of that property back over to the state. The other, the other nice thing, Mr. Sepulveda did indicate to me during that call that it was the intent of Ironbound to follow through on their obligations under the EDA-CDA loan. So that was good to hear.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Lance.
So they did say that they want to come through on their obligation with the EDA loan, but we do have a loan that was extended to them and they bought a vehicle. And we have no proof of insurance on this vehicle. We have no idea where this vehicle is. I know if a bank loans somebody a money and there's no proof of insurance, they send the collector out, you know, or a repo man to go collect that vehicle. You know, is that something that we should be looking at or an avenue? And I'm pretty sure those repo guys hope they're still working, but you know, that does kind of concern me, that longer we give them, where is this vehicle? You know, it's probably gone by now, but maybe not.
Mayor, if I may clarify, actually with, with the EDA-CDA loan, there were actually two items of security that were offered. One was a Ford, Ford Edge crossover vehicle. And the other was a camera package for movie production. And so what we can do in the next, in the next couple of weeks is we can follow through and we have a right under the contract to obtain locations of that, of that property, make sure, you know. I think the first step would be just asking the question, see if they'll, if they'll respond to us and let us know where that, where that collateral is, so that we can collect it in if we need to.
Brian, this is Counselor Vaki. My only question would be, how, how, how is it determined what property they think out of there? And what is, would be considered our property under, you know, I mean, I'm concerned that they're going to strip that place until it's, it's nothing. So I guess that's, that's where my concern would come in.
Right, and Mayor, if I may?
Brian, let me break in one minute. Larry, can you mute your mic? Thank you. Go ahead Brian.
Okay, we do have provisions in the lease that, that make it fairly clear as far as stripping out wiring or stripping out any of the fixtures that have become a part of the building. All of that property becomes the property of the city. And we took, took some extra care putting that lease together to make sure that those points were clear. As far as, as actually removing any of the property that's affixed to the building, we should be in good shape there. And I think the, the time that we've got now will give us the ability to work with them and make sure that we kind of work cooperatively to make sure that nothing goes out that shouldn't go out and everything that needs to go out, it does go out.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, anything else? That's just informational.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, Counselor Varda?
Brian. Uh, Brian, uh, I worked, uh, twenty years with Steve Sanders, who was the employee or whatever you want to call him for Ironbound. And I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure you can start looking in New Mexico for the camera and the car. Very good.
All right, we'll move on, uh. Brian, also thank you for the next one to just try to clarify the relationship between HRAs in general and the city, so they work.
True, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I, I did try to lay out with a little bit of detail in the memo what the legal relationship is. Um, clearly, uh, every city has the ability to have an, uh, uh, an HRA. Uh, and the city of Chisholm has taken the steps necessary as outlined in the, in the memorandum briefly to create our HRA, and I think the best way to think about an HRA is it's like a subsidiary if, if the, if the, you think of the city as a corporation. Uh, the HRA is like a subsidiary. Uh, and so it's its own distinct legal entity and what it does is it discharges these functions that the city uh, has a duty or an obligation to its residents to take care of. Uh, and there's certain connections, um, between the two entities. The primary connection is financial. There's certain statutory provisions and certain practical provisions where the city gets involved in, uh, acting essentially as a cosigner on their bond issues and, and assisting with financing for certain major projects. And it's important to the city that we keep that in mind for a couple of reasons. Number one, just to note that connection, but number two, just to be mindful that when, when the HRA authorizes a large project, that in turn can, um, affect, uh, the city's bonding ability and its, its overall bonding capacity. The other item or the other piece, statutory piece that really connects the two entities is that, uh, in order to start certain larger projects, because of the relationship and because of the statutory scheme, the HRA actually would have to come back, present the plan and, and have it signed off on by the city. And this is, this is a lot like what happened with the Lincoln Square project. So the final piece that I kind of wanted to highlight from the memo that's important is uh, because these are two distinct entities and because they're both, they both act in the nature of corporations. Uh, there is that, uh, you know, corporate veil that we always talk about in the law or that layer of protection that separates the, generally separates the actions of the HRA from the actions of the city. So there's not cross liability on things and so long as we both act, uh, reasonably in discharging our obligations and duties, there's no liability that attaches from one to the other. And with that, um, and, and in light of the memo, I'd be happy to try and answer any other questions that there may be regarding the relationship.
Counsel, any questions or Brian, I know.
So thank you very much, Brian.
All right, we'll move on then, um. Administrator Manny, amendment number one, the Iron Range Research and Board Redhead Mountain Bike Trail Joint Powers Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I'd like to start off by referring you to page sixty-four and sixty-five of your packet. Give everybody a couple of seconds to get there. The reason I want to start here is that you can see the amendment is basically only a page and a half uh, to the joint powers agreement. The signature page is on page sixty-six, but the, the basic amendment is just on page sixty-four and sixty-five. So when that information, um, was presented, I'd asked Attorney Lindsay to, uh, give a recommendation. Uh, because it is a legal document, his recommendation is on, or his analysis is on page sixty-three. And he lays out four items that the amendment to the joint powers agreement, uh, does. Uh, one is extends the effective date of the agreement for a year up to March fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it increases the total cap on the miles for the trail from twenty-five to thirty-four. Um, they are asking to open approximately sixteen point seven miles of the Redhead Trail in June of this year. That is the portion that is completed. And it would turn possession control responsibility for the completed trail over to the city of Chisholm as of June two thousand and twenty. Going back to page sixty-two in my memo, I put an action item and the reason I put an action item is because I know the council has an awful lot of questions regarding what does this mean? Uh, there's been conversations about making sure that there's proper signage on the trail. There's been conversations about, uh, emergency rescue. Um, there's been questions about the ATV vehicles that go through, um, uh, currently go through the location. There's been, um, meetings and conversations with the IROC, the Iron Range Cycle Club as far as a joint maintenance agreement. There's things with, um, uh, lease agreements. There's all kinds of questions that I knew the council would have. And so in my opinion, the, the, the best way I thought to handle this was to bring the proposed amendment to the council tonight. And the reason I have action item checked is, um, as I said in my memo, I'm predicting the council will have questions for the ITRRB before signing off on their proposed amendment number one. Now, my recommendation is, uh, that the council get to me with, with the questions that they have regarding, um, the amendment to the joint powers agreement. Uh, just as a point of clarification, the original joint powers agreement states that the city of Chisholm does not have to take ownership of, of this park, um, until completion. And so the main gist of this is that, uh, the city has been asked to open the park prior to completion. So again, my recommendation is to obtain, say, over the next week or so, uh, questions from council members that I can, whether I have to reach OTI triple R B, the IROC Club, the Minnesota Discovery Center, um, our emergency personnel, um, whomever, to get those questions answered and then bring everything back to the May thirteenth council meeting. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Bill, uh, let me start just because I've had some conversations with you, uh, you know. I mean, you alluded to a lot of it. Obviously, if they're opening up half a park and working on the other half, the number one most, actually, there's two very, very, very. If I didn't say very, I'll say it again, very important things. Number one is how we sign it to make sure that the, the part that's being used and the part that's being constructed does not somehow overlap so the signage is wanted, uh, obviously the most important parts. I think there's some fencing or signage to keep people from falling off cliffs. That's, uh, obviously part of this. And then obviously the big one is, uh, we, we got to make sure we at least get a walkthrough with our fire ambulance, first responders before this thing opens, so they understand how this all lays out, where are their points of, uh, um, closest points of getting vehicles and people and whatnot in there. Uh, so, I mean, those would be my concerns, you know, the rest is just y- y- you know, everyday operation, but I mean, we, like you said, we have to make sure the part that's opened is is the only part they're using and if something happens that we're able to get help to them. Counsel, anybody want to add to that for now? But Bill's looking to just take some notes and basically bring it back to a, a next meeting, Bill, did you say?
Yes, Mayor.
No, thank you, Bill. Um, you know, you hit everything, you know. You know, nail right on the head, especially with signage and mapping. Uh, I'm very concerned about us taking over before it's completed, you know, there's going to be a contract with money that's going to be involved and you know, if we're going to be starting to sink that money that they're going to give us for utilizing and maintaining this course before it's even completed, you know, we're going to run out of that money pretty quick. So, um, I, I definitely agree that there's a lot of things that, um, you know, they have to do to make sure our minds are at ease, but I, I don't think we should be even thinking about taking over the, um, control of this until it is completed.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Um, I agree, um, I think it's just, uh, asking a lot of us, it's premature, um. I don't think we should be taking, um, ownership of this until the whole thing's completed. There's too many unknowns, too many things at risk, there's too many, too many things that need to be done. There's just a lot of questions, so.
And if I can help alleviate any of the questions even too, I've been, I've been watching this project, of course, from day one besides, uh, uh, you know, invested interest with the ATV trail going through it there, uh. I've been, you know, because I, I think that we all will be involved, but I think I'll be the one getting the phone calls and be the one that gets looked at to take care of a problem, so I've been following it very closely. Um, then I've been, you know, involved daily basically with email exchanges and signage and, and stuff. So if there's any concern at all that I can help, uh, alleviate too, um, I'm more than, I mean, you know, questions or take, take questions and. Um, yeah, just, just, uh, some of you know my early reaction to this. And I was, you know, eyes wide open, like, yikes, you know, but I'm, I'm going to say recently I've been impressed with the, um, you know, I think why is that? Like all of us, the carpeting in the room and the light switches are all put on and everything looks all nice and cleaned up. They can see the end and it's just, it's pretty cool and, uh, and everything is really coming together. Uh, one thing I would note is the relationship that they've built with the St. Louis County, uh, Mine Inspector. The relationship I see with him is by far excels any relationship I've seen with Derek. I know Derek from my time at U, well, the Mine Inspector with my time at US Steel and I'm impressed. So, um, if I can help at all, you just let me know and I'm here to answer questions too, if there is any.
Thank you, Larry. Counsel, so what I'm hearing from, uh, at least two of the council people is that, uh, you know, if you look at, I, uh, you know, Brian's, uh, synopsis on page sixty-three, you'd want to strike them last two items. You don't, you don't want to change it. Um, you want to complete it before we take ownership, period. I think Counselor Campbell and Counselor Lance chimed in on that.
That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few things to say.
Go ahead, Counselor Vada.
Uh, this, the bike field thing started before you were on a council, obviously. Before Counselor Lance, Fountain and Counselor Vaki, before Bill and, uh, Counselor Campbell knows I voted against this one hundred percent of the time. And Larry knows I voted against one hundred percent of the time because he was part of the ATV group that was attending meetings. I'm told against the city ever taking this over.
So you're not buying a bike?
Nope. I have a bike. I will be riding there.
So Counselor Fountain, Counselor Vaki, uh, how do you feel about this thing?
Hi, this is Counselor Fountain. I would have to agree with Counselor Lance and Counselor Campbell. I feel that there's a lot of questions and, and also, uh, Bill's memo here. Um, we've got a lot of questions that need to be answered before we can take, uh, over this Redhead Trail and, uh, resume, assume responsibility for it, so. That's my thoughts.
Um, for me, I guess, um, I agree that I don't like the fact that they're asking the city to take it over when it's not completed. My question, which, which I guess will hopefully get answered, Bill can get the answer for me is, um, if, you know, can they open it if the state of Minnesota is? If, if, let's say they say, okay, well, we won't make you take ownership of it until it's completed, but we're still going to open it. Is that, is that allowed? I guess that would be a question that I have. Another question that I would have is what about the people who don't care? And they still ride it because Larry and I almost got ran over in the, in the spring last year by a biker who already came through it. So that would be my second question. And, uh, another question that I have is, is who controls IROC? Because they put out that they were going to have a spring ride in May and we had to say no, you know, so who, who's controlling that group? And the, so to me, I, I think the, the potential's here for it to be big, especially when people are allowed to do more stuff now with this COVID thing, but, but, uh, I have, I, I, I would be lying if I, if I didn't have ten questions that I couldn't ask Mr. Plummer. You know, I'd rather meet with him than send him a question.
Yeah, if I could just expand on like, you know, so the opening early. You know, if we're going to open some miles of trail, as long as there's proper mapping, there's proper signage, there's, hey, you can go here, you can't go here. So our, we're covered under a liability insurance, you know, we're going to have, that's the biggest thing, you know, they should be working on signage and mapping. Should be the first thing, you know, it's all got to be detailed, it's got to be somewhere noticeable where they can see it and everybody's going to have direct access to it. Uh, you know, I, I agree that once they do open up and the spring comes, this is going to be huge. Um, you know, once we do start getting more lax, but you know, we, we don't mean our restaurants open for these people to go dine at, so. You know, as far as people are encouraged to travel or, and not encouraged to travel, they're encouraged to get outside, they're encouraged to exercise, but they're also encouraged to stay near their own communities. You know, people aren't advised to drive, you know, across the state of Minnesota and go stay at the Chisholm Inn Suites, unfortunately. You know, will that change? Maybe, but, um, you know, I, I think the, the number one thing for us should be going back to them is one and two of this four lists, look, it's like it is easy to say yes to, you know, three, you get your proper m- mapping and signage. You know, we should be open to that, but four is, that's just ridiculous. Do we need to make a motion to do anything here? Are we still just on discussion?
Well, you know, the way I see it here is if they came back with all their I's dotted and their T's crossed, I mean, we could consider it, but there's obviously a lot of questions. Uh, and I don't, you know, just listening to everybody, I don't think we have the votes to open it anyway. We got uh, one period wants to wait until, you know, basically March of two thousand twenty-one, it sounds like. You're still on the screen, I'm laughing at you.
Mayor, Mayor Jampa, if, what I'm, some of the stuff that I'm, I'm hearing, I, I want to listen to everybody. What, truly what I'm hearing is a lot of, there's, I think most everybody's just misinformed um, about, just about the detail, I think that, uh, Counselor Lance said it there, that I think it sounds like we need to get back in meetings about it so people can ask the questions and then it'd be explained. Because it's, it's not really not finished. The, the, the part that they're asking for is finished. They, they've worked with Roland, uh, they got an emergency plan, they're going to set up the train with, uh, Hibbing. Um, it's going to be signed, it's, um, the ATV trail's going to be going through it, it's signed, it's going to be signed, uh, where some of the other comments aired.
Can I just jump in real quick, Larry?
Yeah, please, please.
It's thought that it's going to be signed is a lot different than them having their signage in place. You know, before we're approving anything, I think they need to be, they need to be there. The trail's not done until there's a sign on the trail, in my opinion. I do, you know, I do understand these trails, the, so there's a little bit more to it.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
Larry, uh, my biggest, here's what I want, here's what I want, sorry for my. I want, I want Mr. Plummer to come and explain to me and walk me through A to Z on what's done, what's going to be open, how it's going to be signed, et cetera. That's what would comfort me. If he can do that to me and I can say, okay, then I'll, then I'll vote yes to open up what part he wants to open up, but until that happens, I'm not comfortable opening it. And that, I, I, that's where the missing link is for me. Like, I've never even met this guy, except for he showed up at one council meeting to talk to us.
I agree.
Hey, uh, Administrator Manny?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you, uh, feel you have enough to bring back to, to them? I mean, it sounds like, number one, we got a lot of I's to cross, a lot of T's to cross and we may have to get a Zoom meeting with, with, uh, the people such as Plummer, um, you know, with Larry there, obviously. I mean, we, you know, in, in order for the council to even consider it, I mean, they, they need to see what's being used, what the, the, what the, uh, the sign, sign layout. they, they need to see what's being used, what the, the, what the, uh, the sign, sign layout's gonna be. Uh, and how we're accessing for emergency stuff before they could even consider, uh, this change that's being asked for. From what I'm hearing and then, uh, go ahead, I'll stop, go ahead, Counsel Campbell.
Could I recommend that we just set up a meeting so we can all have our, our, our questions and then he can answer them? And then, uh, instead of us submitting questions, why can't we just have a Zoom meeting where we can all just kinda, you know, have her, ask him directly?
I, I would be okay with that. Bill, do you think we can get something maybe like the middle of May or something? I mean, we gotta give it enough time because I think there needs to be a bunch of discussions that have to take place about what we're gonna expect, uh, unless they got it all ready to go.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess I, I would reach out to, uh, to, to Mr. Plummer and also the IROC group is a, is an important part of this too. Um, to see when they'd be available to, uh, answer questions and, uh, from the council.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
Am I mistaken or did Larry mention they have to do some training with Hibbing? Why?
Uh, it's my understanding they have the, um, don't they have some kind of rescue equipment that you guys don't, Bob? Uh, um.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I can answer this question.
Go ahead, Bill.
My understanding is that the Hibbing rescue is trained in rope rescue, basically lowering down via ropes, whereas Chisholm is not. Um, Bob can, Bob Brown can probably answer that, um, but that's my understanding. Hibbing is already trained for that.
Correct. And we're gearing up with the, both our ambulance service and fire department, our goal this spring. Now we can't, we're restricted on doing, um, hands-on training, so that's push that back. We don't have, uh, some of the rescue equipment, some of the ATVs that, and then if we get, acquire some of that, we don't have the storage. So there's a lot of issues there that we're faced with. And if Hibbing is tied up, um, our first, uh, goal to come in would be the St. Louis County Rescue Squad. And that could be quite some time to get them in here. And we've been just overwhelmed this past month dealing with this COVID. So at this time for us to be anywhere near being ready for it, we are not.
Okay. Well, why don't we look at trying to set up a Zoom meeting with, uh, these other groups and see how close we are? You know, maybe it's, maybe it's July, maybe it's August.
Uh, yeah, I agree.
It's a bike trail, uh, during like anybody, you know, when, when it finally opens, it gets opened. It's not like it's, uh, um, it's gonna change if it's a month later, right?
So, Mr. Mayor, was this fall underneath the park or the playground?
Will you look for a job?
Second job.
I'll verify it for Tammy.
I already told Tammy, I said, you got a new park. I think she pulls some of her hair out then, but. So Bill, can you work on seeing if you can get some type of a meeting with us? I think would be good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Um, we don't need any direction, you'll just take it on. Let's make a motion. We'll have Administrator Manny, uh, try to, uh, uh, arrange a meeting to see if we can see where the holes in this plan are. How's that?
I'll make that motion to arrange a meeting with, uh, the Redhead Mountain Joint Powers Agreement people.
Uh, second.
Okay, motion by Counsel Campbell, second by Counsel Vaki, I believe. Any other discussion? Margaret, you, uh, take a vote to make that direction.
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fountain?
Aye.
Counsel Vaki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
May?
Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
And Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Margaret. Um, St. Louis County Second Priority Authorization Agreement for Redhead Mountain Bike Trail. Uh, Bill, I don't know if you wanna do it or you want Brian to explain what it really does.
Right. Brian, if you don't mind, I would ask for your help because this is, um, the second priority, there, there, there's already an agreement in place, right, Brian?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I believe there is, Bill.
And, and this is expanding upon the agreement that's already there.
Correct. This is a, a secondary authorization that the county requires in order for us to, to have and hold and to operate a bike trail that crosses over onto any county property. Uh, so, but essentially it lays out, uh, a number of requirements you're gonna have for us. And as I outlined in my memo, some of this is a little bit concerning because it's not, it's not items that we have within our control. A lot of it deals with how the, how lumber or timber is being removed, how trees are being felled, how things are gonna be being handled during the construction. And those things are outside of our control. Uh, I believe we had that same conversation, uh, with Mr. Plummer last time we had the initial authorization come through. Uh, and I believe he had committed to us that they were following all of the appropriate, uh, building standards in, uh, developing the trail and putting it on the ground. Um, and so as I, as I had looked through this document, while I noted that they did make a lot, there are a lot of requirements. The, the flip side of it is this is something that if we're, if we're considering looking at at any point during the year, getting a trail up and running or even for the long term, this is something that we will need to get in place. And once everything is developed, it appears to me at least that based on the protections we have both through our insurance plan and through the recreational trail provision in Minnesota statute, I think that the, the actual, uh, imposition of any additional risk is, is mitigated enough that we're not overly exposed by entering into this agreement that would be required by the county.
Okay. So then, yeah, your recommendation would be that we can enter in this agreement.
Correct. I don't, I don't think that we would be, uh, I don't think we would expose ourselves to any unnecessary risk by approving this part of the agreement.
Counsel, entertain that motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve St. Louis, you know, to, uh, St. Louis County Second Priority Authorization Agreement, the Redhead Mountain Bike Trail.
Second for that?
Uh, second for discussion.
All right, go ahead, Travis.
Okay, my only, uh, question would be, and maybe this is too premature to even ask this question, uh, Brian, you can probably, uh, tell me yes or no, but what? When I read through this, you know, what if, you know, what happens when it's turned over to us and the county decides to, that we can't use that portion of the area that is run through? Like, is that something that then is our problem? Or I guess just a little clarification there if, if you can, or maybe it's too premature.
I think you're muted, Ryan.
I apologize. Uh, so it is, that, that is an interesting question, it's a very good question. At this point, we've got some fairly lengthy, uh, land leases with St. Louis County that would give us the ability. This is sort of like obtaining the permit to actually operate. So, yeah, I mean, if they came back and, and pulled this authorization, we have a right to go on their property, but we wouldn't have the right to operate bike trail. So at the end of the day, should St. Louis County pull our authorization to maintain and operate bike trail, it, it would be our, our issue at the end of the day. I mean, the trade-off though would be, I think, um, you know, you'd reduce the, the amounts of maintenance and time that you spend attending to those trails, uh, if we weren't able to have them up and operating.
Thank you for that.
One thing also for everyone's, uh, consideration, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could lose the majority of this property back there. You know, in three years, Hibtech could decide that they wanna move over and move the old bike trail off the property if they want to. And, you know, five years from now, we don't even have a bike trail, but we're not the ones investing the current money to make it, correct?
Yeah, and then the Adams, uh, point there, Bill, maybe can step in and, um, confirm that. I believe you, the council could open it today and close it tomorrow. That's it. The council, the council, the city controls everything. Would you agree with that, Bill? You know, if there's a, uh, something happens with St. Louis County or Hibbing tech, basically the city dumps a load of dirt at the entrance as it's closed, that's it.
And I would have to defer that to Brian. Anything there would be, would be a legal issue.
Thank you. Uh, the, I mean, the answer to, I think, both questions is yes. The city has, uh, just as it would with any of its other facilities, the city has the right to restrict access to open it, to close it. And going to Counsel Lance's point, uh, I, I believe he's absolutely correct. The, the operation of the trail, the land leases, the whole shebang is subject to mineral rights.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Campbell.
I have a question for, uh, Attorney Lindsay. So I thought in the beginning of all this, the city had the right, they could walk away at any time from this agreement, is that correct?
That is also correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we do have a motion in support to, uh, approve this agreement. St. Louis County Second Priority Authorization Agreement. There's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. Go ahead, Margaret.
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fountain?
Aye.
Counsel Vaki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
Aye.
Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
And Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Brian, Bill. Uh, Bill, uh, Resolution zero four two zero dash three six, city as fiscal agent for Northern Tracks ATV grant from Iron Range Resources Rehabilitation Board.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, Larry, I'm gonna ask you to step in if I say something you're incorrect because Larry knows more about this than I do. But, um, just, uh, as a point of reference, we currently are, the city is the fiscal agent for the Northern Tracks ATV Club, but that is through, uh, grant money and money that comes from the DNR. So when this request came to me, I asked Attorney Lindsay, um, does this need to go to the council? Being that the city is already the fiscal agent for Northern Tracks for DNR grant money that falls through here. It's basically in and out. And Attorney Lindsay's opinion to me was yes, because the grant is from another agency. So what this has to do with is also the Redhead Mountain Bike Trail. And, um, um, has to do with the, the trail basically connecting Chisholm and Hibbing. And, um, the I triple R B with their funding, they're, they're looking for a one-to-one match now. So the, in your packet, you'll notice that there's some paperwork that actually goes to bar engineering. Cause they were working, uh, with the Northern Tracks ATV Club on the grant with the I triple R B. And so the grant is a thirty thousand dollar grant to Northern Tracks. But the match is actually coming, the other thirty thousand is coming from the Quad Cities ATV Club. So the total dollars for this project, which is the Chisholm-Hibbing connection, um, is a total of sixty thousand dollars. So I'm recommending, uh, approval that the city and the city clerk specifically per the, um, resolution that is on page eighty that the city clerk asks for the acts as the fiscal agent. It's basically a flow-through. Money comes in, money goes out. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Counsel, if there's no questions, I'd, uh, entertain a motion to adopt Resolution zero four two zero dash three six.
Mr. Mayor? I'll make that motion. Whoever, go ahead.
Who made the original motion?
Counsel Varda.
Okay, Counsel Varda made the motion, Counsel Campbell seconded it.
Sure.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fountain?
Aye.
Counsel Vaki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
Aye.
Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, next item, uh, I think it's just informational, Bill, quarterly financial reports.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, informational, um, I put my memo, um, at our next regularly scheduled meeting on May thirteenth, we will have the first quarter financial report. Um, we just needed a, a little bit of additional time to prepare based on fiscal year nineteen, year-end accruals getting done. And then the time challenges that the COVID nineteen has put on us. So, uh, informational that, uh, administration, we did not forget about, uh, council's ask for quarterly financial reports. And, uh, Deputy Clerk Saw and me were working hand in hand and we will have a report on May thirteenth.
Thank you, Bill. We'll move on then, uh, Zamboni trade-in, Bill?
Okay, the Zamboni, um, can see on pages, uh, on page eighty-three, from Zamboni, they offered a twelve thousand dollar, twelve thousand five hundred dollar amount for trade-in on the machine that has been approved to be purchased. Um, I asked Ed Chairman to go out and look and see if there's comparable values out there. I also went online and looked and, and basically found the same thing that, that Ed did. The only thing that's comparable, um, our Zamboni is a, a nineteen ninety-one, by the way, um, is the, the sale of a, um, nineteen eighty-six Zamboni for six thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, so, unless, unless there's any questions, my recommendation is to, um, accept the trade-in offer of twelve thousand five hundred towards the purchase of the new Zamboni.
I'll make that motion for, uh, that we, uh, uh, approve the trade-in of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of the new Zamboni.
Support, Counsel Lance.
Okay, motion by Counsel Vaki, seconded by Counsel Lance, further discussion? Margaret, take a vote, please.
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fountain?
Aye.
Counsel Vaki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
Aye.
Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
And Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Um, next item, um, so we're two and a half hours into this, anybody need a three-minute break or we're all good? Everybody's good.
That's cool. How do you eat supper yet?
Yeah, okay. Uh, okay, uh, Resolution zero four two zero dash three seven, extend the local emergency. Pretty straightforward, page eighty-four to eighty-six, it's just to follow the government's, governor's, uh, basically follow what they're doing down there for our local emergency, so I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion, this is Counsel Vaki.
Okay, second for that?
Second.
Second by Counsel Campbell, further discussion? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fountain?
Aye.
Counsel Vaki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
Aye.
Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
And Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that resolution is adopted. Uh, boards and commissions, informational. Um, I get asked numerous times, what are we gonna do with boards and commissions? We have, you know, Zoom tele, you know, we can do, uh, conference calls if we have Brian involved in them. Bill has some programs for doing, uh, conference calls on the phone. So basically informational, if we have things that need to be taken up on our boards and commissions, uh, we'll have to hold the meetings if we can, uh, best we can. We have all different levels of technology, uh, we do what we can do. But, uh, I, I do know there's some things on the planning and zoning and some on EDA, and I know they're gonna wanna get together. Um, so informational, but I think, uh, unless the council feels otherwise, um, we'll let them hold the meetings as best they can in this time.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counsel Lance.
If they do decide to host those meetings, where are they gonna post the public notice? Public notice so the public can attend if they want to.
Quick answer would be City Hall, thoughts on that, Bill? Bill, you still on with us?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, hit the wrong button. Um, currently we're posting notices on the door at City Hall, both, both doors.
Okay. Anything else, Counsel, before we move on? Okay, we'll move on, the next, uh, item. It's an action item, but it's, uh, basically city attorney's opinion on the campgrounds with regard to, um, our current situation. Um, we had a discussion about this the other day with some changes. Ryan, can you just kinda do an overview of, uh, you know, what we felt, uh, could and couldn't be done up at that campground should the, the city purchase, actually i- in its current state even, uh, whether we own it or if the, the person that currently owns it owns it. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, we did have a discussion and, uh, campgrounds have been kind of a, a hot button item, especially following the release of or the issuance of the governor's executive order twenty dash thirty-eight, which loosened up some restrictions on outdoor recre- recreational activities. That being said, that, uh, executive order along with the, uh, Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Guidelines, which are incorporated by Executive Order twenty thirty-eight, make it clear that all campgrounds, both public and private, have to remain closed for recreational camping. Uh, and so, uh, looking at that a little bit more, uh, what it looks like, what is very clear when you read through the DNR's guidelines is if a, uh, if a campsite is long-term and is essentially is taken up as a residence, uh, then, uh, it's a, it's a permitted activity. And so when you look at whether or not it's a number one recreational, uh, camping, or number two, whether it's been, uh, taken up essentially as a residence, what we're looking at are people that essentially live in, uh, in RV sites for the summer mainly for, you know, work purposes or for some other purpose other than just to be out in nature recreating. If, if those case, if those circumstances are in fact true and the folks that are living in those RVs are observing the appropriate social distancing and, and otherwise following the DNR's outdoor uh, guidelines for outdoor activities, then it would be a permissible activity. So, uh, up at the campground, what I understand is they've kinda got two different ways that it can be set up for camping. One is a long-term, like a monthly lease rental, uh, where people would bring in an RV and they're, they're staying for long-term periods. Uh, and the other is what they call taxable camping, and this is the more short-term uh, stays, weekend stays, week stays, this is kinda what we traditionally think about as camping. Uh, I think the executive orders, the, the status of the law right now is very clear that that taxable type camping cannot occur. And I think where there's longer-term residencies taken up or people are there for employment purposes, essentially for a place to live while they work, uh, those types of activities, uh, clearly are permitted. So my understanding is, at this point, they, they may have some people up at the campground that, that qualify for that longer-term establishment of a residence, which would allow them to stay. Uh, uh, Bill, just, uh, y- you were in on a conversation with the Lockins as well, they're, the number of, uh, what was it, about eight percent of the total yearly is, is the, the ones that wouldn't really qualify? Was it something like that? It was a pretty small number. Most of them were basically there for live or, or work for, for the majority of the summer, basically.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel, uh, based on the numbers provided by the current owners of Lockins on last year, eighty-eight percent of the revenue would be the so-called long-term monthly or longer. The recreational camping or the taxable would be about twelve percent.
Okay. Okay, so the reason this is important, obviously, is the next item, uh, because should we move ahead with the purchase of the campground, uh, you'll have a sense of, uh, until the governor's order is changed or lifted that we will have a, a slightly, uh, lower, uh, occupancy potentially, uh, based on that we can allow everybody in there, so, um, do we need, we don't need to do anything with that at this point, we would have to post it appropriately if we take it over. I believe the Lockins were trying to find the right terminology, they were gonna do it in the meantime. So, um, that would be the action here, right, Bill? I mean, with...
That, that would be my understanding, Mayor.
So we don't really need to do anything here unless we move forward with the urges?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just add? Can I just add something into that?
Yes, Counselor.
I, I was also, obviously I'm part of this committee, so, um, one thing I wanted to just add that I don't think has been said yet is, we, in that call, we made sure that all those long-term campers, um, were far enough away that would qualify them for, um, the social distancing, um, part of, of that. And you're right, that the Lockins did say they were gonna post that, no, um, none of the taxable camping would be allowable.
Okay. So let's just move over right past that one, we don't really need to do anything with it, let's get on to the next item then. Um, I'll start with this, um, I'm kinda gonna talk about number four, five, and six altogether. Uh, but then obviously we would have to take them up at separate items, and then when I'm done talking, uh, Travis was also on that committee, Larry was part of it, Bill was part of it, Brian's been in on discussions, so, um, I don't even know, how long ago was it, six months ago we started talking about this campground? Maybe longer, um, in any case, we set up the committee to have Counselor, uh, Vaki and myself, along with the administrator, the attorney, meet with, um, the Lockins and try to come up with an agreement to basically, uh, terminate the lease and purchase, uh, you know, basically purchase the place as a, uh, city campground, um. Almost immediately, um, we determined that there's kind of a little bit of a problem right dead center, right out front, which is a laundromat with a tenant living upstairs of it, um. I can tell you, being a former laundry owner, uh, that you could, you could never have a city-owned laundromat, you, you could never make any money, there's not enough income there to uh, staff it and repair stuff. So we had that big glaring problem, and then, you know, as a city itself, our HRA does, um, you know, it has tenants, uh, we don't as a city as far as, uh, like an actual for residents, uh, such as above there. Um, so as we started our discussions with the Lockins, we, you know, started looking at different options available there, we looked at if there was a a third-party company that would come in and run the laundromat portion of it. We hadn't really figured out what we could do with the, uh, the person living upstairs of the place yet, but we wanted to see if somebody would run the laundromat, uh, uh, and there are a number of companies that do like, what do they call them, on-premise laundry for apartment buildings and stuff. But we were unsuccessful in finding, uh, somebody that would do that. Um, in that discussion, uh, even though the Lockins want to retire and get out of it, he suggested that maybe we could take everything over and then he maintains control of his laundry equipment and he leases the building to run a laundromat in it, with his ultimate goal would be to, uh, hand that portion of the lease off to somebody else and finally retire, um. That sounded like a pretty good option, uh, and that's the one we bring forward tonight. Uh, a number of reasons, I don't believe as a city we can run a laundromat. I don't think we should close it if it's gonna make us money. I don't think we should own the laundry equipment because then we're somehow responsible for maintaining it, and if the tenant was responsible for maintaining it, uh, I believe you'd get a lot better maintenance if their income relies on that equipment working then. Uh, you know, I, my concern is the lease have, has to work. If we move forward with this, we gotta keep somebody in that laundromat or we're gonna lose, and I think it's valuable, Chisholm is now the only one, um, at least at this point, um. Travis, you wanna chime in at that point, I, you know? Let me, let me add one more thing before I let you talk. As far, you know, we talked about trying to end the lease, purchase, y- you know, the rights to run it back, uh, we separated, so it's two different items, um. Right off the bat, our intentions would be to clean out the old trailer park, I guess you would call it, um, that's to the south of the laundry building that's sitting there. Um, and almost immediately look at how many sites we can create. We originally looked at eight sites, but we don't, we don't know that yet, we needed AMT to really determine that, um. Yeah, I think, I think that would be the buck to just a bit, Travis, you can chime in now, I guess.
Okay, um, yeah, so, um, I'll just, I'll echo everything that you said, I think you explained it very well. Um, as far as the process goes, my only add would be, um, that Lance, um, has been fantastic through this, he wants the city to own it, he's willing to help in any way that we need as we transition, hopefully purchasing this, um, but I think you laid it out pretty well, um, I don't know, I mean, I know Larry's been in, involved in it a little bit, so I'll just let him talk, but I'm fully in support of it, I plan on making the motion when we get to that point.
Okay, um, anybody el- else have anything to add?
No, I'd like to thank you guys for your work and, uh, your work with Lance, I think this is gonna be a great asset to the city. Uh, I think one thing that we might have to look into, you know, if things are still slowed down while this COVID nineteen's going around and, you know, that's, we're not back to normal, we can use that time to utilize some of that space behind the campground after we buy it and make it a little bigger for the, you know, the taxable recreational, you know, campers that come in there, so, you know, I think this is gonna be great for everybody involved, it's gonna be great for the city and, uh, you know, it's gonna coincide with that bike trail really well, so thank you guys very much for your work and your time.
Yeah, let me jump back in here, uh, too, um, you know, the Lockins, they, they, uh, you know, what Travis said, I mean, they've been really good to work with through this process, I mean, Lance has every intention of helping us get acclimated to running a campground, uh, working with us, being there still for us when we shut it down for the year. Uh, and I think over the winter, he intends to try to get out of, get that lease that we, you know, we would draw up with him uh, and move on, he, I mean, he's retired in his, the rest of his life, I believe, uh, Bill mentioned. So, I mean, he, he would be looking at, uh, getting somebody basically to purchase that small uh, sliver that's left, which is basically the laundry equipment and the ability to work with the city under a lease agreement with us, which we would have to write a new lease at that point, um. So, that's kinda my overall on the thing, you know, I, this, it, it, it's, it's in three parts, um, per the, per the attorney's recommendations, um, you know, basically it would be terminate the lease, which is where the big money comes in, we're, we're asking them to leave, I believe it's about six years early, we're asking them to leave, um. Uh, then the bill of sale for the campground itself, and then the lease, leasing the item back to the Lock, excuse me, the Lockins, uh, at this point, um. The one change that you'll see on that item number six, the number, the monthly number went down a little bit, and it's because in our last, I guess, two meetings ago, we asked him if he had included the taxes. Uh, the portion that he is using is taxable, and, and he had not, and we let him pull the, the, the property taxes out of it. What did it go down, Bill, about a hundred dollars a month is what it did?
Yes, Mayor, exactly a hundred dollars a month, from nine twenty-five, uh, lease payment to eight twenty-five.
So, you know, um, you know, back when this started, uh, I thought it was a great idea to own a city campground. Uh, I still do, I think we kinda got it figured out at least for now on how we would deal with that laundromat portion of it and the, uh, uh, let me add, the tenant upstairs would be, uh, also part of, uh, that laundry lease, they would, they would, uh, have to continue, uh, with that tenant, uh, making, you know, that, that's, that's their income, is having that tenant upstairs, um. You know, so I would definitely recommend that we, we move through with these items, and the first one would be to mutually terminate the lease, uh, for the Iron Trail RV Park and Laundry, which would, um, it basically cleans it all up, there were some question on, uh, there were some real questions, I've actually, maybe I'll have, uh, Attorney Lindsay jump in after I get done saying what I have to say, but, I mean, there were some questions when we started looking at different things on, uh, could the Lockins like tear down that laundromat building, take it with them, and, um, it, it's actually a very gray area, um. So moving ahead with this one thing that, uh, uh, Mr. Lindsay did in these documents is make sure that this thing is clean, it's, 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 it's gonna end up being, everything on the site is gonna be ours, and the lease is gonna be the only thing that we have hanging out there at this point. Uh, Brian, uh, would that be correct? Absolutely, Mayor, um, there was, a- as we looked at this, and I think I've reported back to the council previously, that there were some, some gray areas as far as additions being made to the property, when they were made, who owned them, you know, who gained the rights to them. But the combination of the termination of pre-existing lease along with bill of sale that transfers all personal property except for certain laundromat items, the city, it clarifies all those questions. Everything then that exists on that spot, unless it's specifically exempted, would belong to the city, we wouldn't have to answer this question in the future. Okay. So the first item, then, the, uh, item number, uh, four would be the merch, mutual termination of the lease, it's on page ninety, um, cost of that mutual termination would be a hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um, I'd recommend we move forward with this item.
Uh, I, Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion that we, um, fall, we move ahead with the mutual termination of the lease, uh, for the sum of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which by the way, originally started at two hundred fifty, but it's down to one seventy.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have motion by Counselor Vaki, seconded by Counselor Campbell, uh, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, uh, Margaret, could you take up the vote, please?
Counselor Lance?
Aye.
Counselor Fountain?
Aye.
Counselor Vaki?
Aye.
Counselor Varda?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes, uh, item number five is the bill of sale for the campground, um. I'd entertain a motion to approve the bill of sale.
I'll make that motion, uh, to approve the bill of sale for the campground.
Support, Counselor Lance.
Okay, we have motion in support, uh, further discussion? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance?
Aye.
Counselor Fountain?
Aye.
Counselor Vaki?
Aye.
Counselor Varda?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes, the last item is the laundry lease agreement. Starts on page, uh, one, it's actually the complicated part of it because it's a lease agreement, but the just of it, uh, is that, uh, we'll be receiving eight hundred twenty-five dollars per month for the lease of that building. Uh, Brian, what did you end up using for a term here, I don't? Did we go to five years or what did we do?
Mr. Mayor, the, the, go ahead, Brian.
Oh, I did find it, sorry. So it's just a one-year term at this point? Yep, we set a one-year term with, uh, with some additional extension periods. Extend the term, lease in five years, okay, so that's fine, that's, that's the initially how, uh, he wanted it anyway, so. Uh, counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor? I just need to, I need some more clarification here. So we lease the, if we agree, we lease this, um, to the Lockins, right?
Yep.
For probably the end of the year, right? Now, do they have the option of finding, is, what I'm hearing, right, is they will find somebody else to lease it to?
Yes, because it keep, and here's why, because he's, he owns the equipment. Yes, because it keep, and here's why, because he's, he owns the equipment, so. He would have to, we'd have to find somebody with equipment. If there was somebody else that came to us and said, hey, I'll fill it up with my own equipment. I, we could look at that. We don't have to look at what he brings back, but you know, the problem was, we didn't want to own the equipment. And or own a laundromat, so he was really the only one on the table that we could find that would continue running it, you know?
I guess. I don't agree with that.
Intend to sell the lease for, I don't know what he thought. He thought it was worth probably ten grand to sell the lease. To somebody and the equipment that went with it. At some point.
I just think if we're gonna buy the whole thing, we should just buy the whole thing.
But who's gonna run the laundromat for us?
You are.
No? I mean, that's the issue. That was the issue that we came up with is what do we do with that? And I can tell you that the cost of repairing equipment and everything, you gotta have somebody that knows how to do it. So, had we bought the place complete and all the equipment and the person that wanted to lease it couldn't fix the stuff. Eventually, we'd just go out of business and we'd have a big problem. So, we're. Uh, y'all talk for myself, but I'm assuming Travis would agree. Uh, we were looking at the fact that we had a no, somebody knowledgeable that could take care of a laundromat and lease it. And we're really, I I take care of it and fix stuff, and we're really relying on him to find the next person to do that for us. Because we don't have another answer.
So, basically, what we would own the building, but we would not own the equipment. And he would find the, the next person to lease it. And we would just get the eight hundred and twenty-five dollars per month.
Correct. And if there's somebody you have in mind, they should contact him, cuz he's, don't have anybody yet.
The city of Chisholm needs a laundromat. I think that's the best alternative we have. Um, we need to go forward with it, I think.
You wanna make motion to?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Lease agreement?
I'll make that motion to approve that lease agreement. And for the eight hundred and twenty-five dollars per month for the tenant. And for the. Laundromat.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Campbell. Your second by Counselor Vaki?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, further discussion?
I think we should have um, the option of agreeing on who the next person is that leases it.
Uh, April, the, the lease agreement is gonna have to come to us.
Before it would be.
Yep, we, well, Brian, that would be correct. In order for us to transfer the lease, it has to come to us, correct?
Correct. Uh, any, any assignment of the lease is required to be proven right in by the city.
Thank you.
Any other? Margaret, could you take vote, please, on the lease agreement?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Counsel. There was a lot going on there. Uh, next item, resolution zero four two zero dash three eight, apply for and accept Iron Trail. Tourism Bureau Trail Grant for paving trail to campground. Uh, Larry, you wanna talk a little bit about where this came from for me?
I'm eating my dinner. So, uh. It came from, I sent the sweeper down there to clean that frontage road, all the water, all the dirt washes out on that. Frontage road down there, and I thought, well, if the city buys a campground, how are guests gonna walk up to Lake Street? We don't want them walking up that four lane there. You know? And uh. And it just, uh, I think Bill or, it was either Bill or Tammy forwarded me this grant application I went through. And I kinda proposed it and Tammy helped me write the grant and we wrote the grant, submitted it and um, so now we're just in council approval to. Um, to um, ex, uh, for uh, to support it and to accept if we were nominated the money. And the beauty about it is, I think that. Our in-time labor was being able to be used, so we can use our own people, you know, I'll, I'll run the loader and the grader on it to do the prep work. And we have our own material, and all that was able to be put towards the fifty percent. So, that's why it made it so attractive is. Basically, we can probably get that little trail paved from the campground frontage road there all the way into the mining museum parking lot and. Basically for pennies on the dollar.
Larry, how? How far were you gonna take the trail? I was assuming you were just going through the trees and up to the. Road up there.
Yeah, six hundred feet. Basically, well, you gotta go around the corner there cuz you don't want them walking into an intersection, so you gotta go. Basically, right where the arena road goes, right across from the buche ball courts there. It's six hundred feet.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. So, basically, very minimal cost to us with the grant and the in-time late, or us doing a lot of the work.
Yeah, correct. And then frankly, uh, by the, by, I think James and I mentioned it with this, that the oil prices. The pavement is, or was it the, yeah, with the Fourth Avenue project. The pavement is so cheap this year, we're thinking we might be able to get away without paying much of anything, so that's my hope.
Okay. Counsel, if uh, there's no other conversation on it, I would uh, entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make a motion. This is Counselor Fountain to adopt resolution zero four two zero dash three eight.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Support, Counselor Lance.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any other discussion? I just wanna say, Larry, thank you. That's uh, I mean, I think that needs to be done. Like you said, every time it pours it. You know, we wash that whole trail down the road and I.
Everyone drives through town there, it's just kind of a nice sort of that. I wanna thank Tammy and Terry Neville and too for helping me write up the grant. I'm not a. I'm not a creative writer by trade, so I appreciate all the help.
A creative writer, right?
Right.
All right, um, Margaret, could you take vote on that, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Larry. Uh, Chisholm Downtown Revitalization Committee request for a troll park design. Uh, you got a memo there. Basically, they want to work with, let me find it. Page one thirteen. Anyway, they wanna look at redesigning that troll park, which is basically between City Hall and the library. Uh, and you wanna work with the University of Minnesota Extension to redesign it.
Vietnam Memorial. You skipped the memorial thing, informational.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did. I already had a thing. Let me back up then, yeah. Um. As you, most of you know already, that the traveling Vietnam Memorial, they had to cancel it. Uh, I'm hearing possibly they might be able to bring it back next year, but more likely the following year. It's informational, terrible. I was really looking forward. I know a lot of us were. This COVID nineteen is really uh, throwing a. Force you into this summer already. So, let me just mention that. Thank you for letting me know, Travis. Sometimes it's hard to keep track of this. Parts of the meetings are easier. Um, so, okay, let's get back to the next one then. Just the troll park, they're looking for approval to. Look at redesigning that park.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counsel.
What's a troll park?
You know, I wanna answer that for you. Because I said, what's a troll park? When Bill and Margaret and I were figuring out what was needed to be in this agenda, I said. What's a troll park? Where's the troll park? And they said, didn't you see all the trolls on the building that are on the side of the? The backstop for the, the park in between the library and City Hall. Apparently, there's a bunch of trolls on there. I never noticed that.
I guess I know, I never noticed that.
And I think it was, I think somebody mentioned that uh, uh, there might be some graduates of Chisholm High School might be upset. I think it might have been. A school project back in the day. Um, I don't know, Margaret, do you recall? We don't get you in on these meetings very often, but you're listening in.
Know exactly when it happened, but I believe it was Kids Plus and they got a grant from Valspar. So, many years ago. So, yes, it will be sad.
Okay. So, they're looking at changing it to something other than a troll park and looking for approval. Uh, I think screwing things up is always good every so often and changing them up, so I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, to uh, allow them to redo that park.
Second, Counselor Fountain.
Okay, motion by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Fulton. Further discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I gotta vote, sorry. Everybody, Margaret, take a vote.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, next item, set up a working session, question, answer with consulting engineer Jim Johnson. I know that uh, having a staff meeting uh, yesterday that. Jim Johnson is, is wondering what we'd really like to talk about. I know he's not complete on what his, his whole project is. He's just having discussions with Larry and stuff. Right now, but I don't think there's any harm in having the uh. Having a meeting, initial meeting. If we have to have a second one at some point, we can do that. Counsel, what? I'm not sure who actually originally asked about this. I think we all did. What counsel, what are some things we wanna really talk about in that meeting? Other than just in five and ten year, we wanna look at what projects Jim sees us potentially doing down the road and uh. Maybe Larry will be involved as well.
Yeah, this is Counselor Vaki. I guess um, I, I, I can take credit for pushing some of this. You know, being April and Adam and myself and you are new, I, I feel like we have different projects that might take priority. Over the previous regime and the projects that they uh, had. So, that was one thing for me. And then another thing for me is just, I wanna have a, this, uh, you know, just a. A discussion, question, answer type of thing with Jim um, to lay out some concerns that I have. And that have not ever, cuz we've never had this meeting, so. Just some concerns that I have and in a question, answer type of thing. That, that, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Campbell. So, I, I think. You're talking about the previous regime, uh, which would be me and Counselor Varda. All the capital projects go based on needs, infrastructure needs. You gotta remember that. Um. And then we go by what Jim, you know, recommendations are mostly on that kinda stuff. Um, I'm, I'm sure they can change a little bit, like we've had a change issue already on, on some projects, but. That's what dictates it, pretty much what we do.
So, I don't think there'll be any harm in having a meeting. We do have uh, a kind of a long holdover. I mean, we, our next meeting would be. The thirteenth of May. So, we got two weeks in between, so I don't think, you know, I mean. I'd be open to a meeting, you know, that for that fourth to the eighth week. Uh, I don't really have anything going on there at this point, other than work.
Well, I know before this whole COVID started, we did have a meeting lined up with five bugles to go over our public safety building. So, I think maybe now that we're getting a little more accustomed to the Zoom conference, we should take advantage of that, so that way uh. You know, we can meet with five bugles and kinda get some questions answered or kinda go over some topics or. Look at some points that we need to focus on and do it on Zoom, so that way we don't have to pay them to drive up here.
Yep. I'd agree. We'll, we'll have Bill look at, seeing if we can figure something out on that, Adam, as a separate item. I mean, Counsel, if you, I, I mean, I would be okay with meeting with Jim and Larry and we'll talk about our projects. There's no harm in it. Uh, my thoughts would be that fourth to the eighth week. Jim is typically uh, on the clock. You're normally, the fifth would be the fifth and sixth. Would that be correct, Jim? Those are your.
Typically, I'm up there on Tuesday and Wednesday when we're in normal times, but uh, I've got a fairly open schedule, so I always schedule to meet you guys' schedule.
Mr. Mayor? I'm okay with the fifth if anybody else is at five o'clock.
Who, which I am dinner?
That was, that was me. I'm open, just um, I got nothing that weekend, so.
Counsel, how do the rest of you feel about that?
Is that a Tuesday nightmare?
Yes, Tuesday, May fifth, five o'clock.
Works for me.
Somebody wanna make motion?
Motion. I'll make that motion for Tuesday at five o'clock to have a meeting, um, talking about capital improvements. Any questions for Jim?
Support.
Seconded by Counselor Vaki. Further discussion? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Campbell.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Last item tonight, other than miscellaneous, um. You guys, uh, counselors, you've got a prob, I think we all got an email today, the uh, from Whitney Ridlon. Uh, they'd like to, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't get a real good chance, but it looks like they wanted to design the banners to put on our poles. To honor our seniors because of the. Basically, for lack of a better term, the turmoil we're in with this. COVID nineteen and their life being disrupted as seniors. Uh, and they want some help from us. Obviously, I'm hundred percent in favor of it. Is that the just of it, Bill?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, clarification. Whitney Ridlon um, email, uh, Larry Fullstead sent that out as an example. Um, the Downtown Revitalization, Revitalization Committee is purchasing some new banners. So, the, the date that I think that goes back to last September. That was an example that Larry Fullstead sent out. Along with the next page is what we could do or where we could hang the pictures of the seniors. So, um, so the email that. That part of the email that Larry sent out today just has to do with a option for hanging the banners.
Thank you, Bill. I really apologize for not uh, sending that email. You couldn't be more right, Bill. Those are our options. Those are easy options.
So, what is, what is, what emotion we need to make for you?
Well, I think, I think, if I remember correctly, Bill, sorry to interrupt you, but Dr. Blanchard first approached me about seeing if we would do it. If the city would approve it. I said, oh, absolutely, I'm sure we would approve it. I think we just need to give them permission to hang something on our poles. I think that's what she's looking for.
That, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. It looks like uh, there's, there's forty-five senior signs on Lake Street celebrating the graduation of the seniors. And then they're asking, the, the, the school district's asking for the city to partner with the school district in hanging the signs. And that's why Larry sent out the options, the easy options for hanging the sign.
Okay. So, Counsel, I would entertain a motion to allow them to do that and to uh, have our city staff assist uh, with the hanging and whatnot. Motion by Counselor Varda, seconded by Counselor Vaki, I think I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, further discussion? Okay, Margaret, could you take a vote, please? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Sorry about that. Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
And Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Uh. All right, that's everything. Uh, miscellaneous items, I'll just, Bill, just note that uh. I, it'd be nice to have a Zoom meeting again with uh, maybe Mike Clark, just get one more update. Uh. I know we got Mike kind of in a holding pattern cuz we're waiting to see what kind of funding we might get right now. But I don't think it would hurt to have a meeting. Can you see any reason why not, Bill?
No, Mayor, that would be fine. We, we need, Scott's all involved too.
Okay. So, why don't you work on seeing what you can do there? Maybe we can take it up at the next meeting and figure it out. Counselors, is there anything else we're gonna need to do that's burning in your head?
I got two things. I got two things quick. Margaret, um, could you put me on the agenda? Next time, I'll send you a little blurb about.
Next time, I'll send you a little blurb about, uh, uh, discussion about softball league and then.
I think we lost him.
I think he's gone.
Travis is gone. Anybody else got anything while he tries to figure out how to get back on?
Yeah, I'd like to see some packets that are under a hundred pegas in the next few months here.
If you're on the ballot, they'll consider it.
No.
You and Counselor Campbell are on the ballot, we'll consider it.
No.
Travis, did you get back on yet? So, I got a question while we're waiting, cuz I would like, he, he can just add it. Uh, how do you guys put your name on your, uh, thing? I, everybody's got their nice name on your picture. And I, I don't think mine has my name, does it?
When you log in, there's a spot to put your name, yeah.
Oh, okay. That's what I'll have to do. So, I guess, uh, Travis can talk to Margaret, uh, and get those on the agenda, so, um, if you want.
I'll make a motion right there.
Counselor Campbell, seconded by, uh,
Second.
By Counselor Fountain. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed? All right, everybody, have a good night. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Stay safe, everyone.